It's been on me.
Yeah.
It's not, I promise. I called order the planning and zoning commission city of Glen Rose, Texas on August 27, 2025 at 5:30 PM. If I can have everybody rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Gray Clanton. Megan Chulkey.
Present.
Rex Miller.
Present.
Tony Griston.
Present.
We have a complete panel. We are in quorum. All right. To begin our consent agenda, what's regarding the approval of minutes for the July 23rd, 2025 planning and zoning board meeting is everybody had an opportunity to review.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any revisions? All right, if there's no proposed changes, is there a motion for action to approve the minutes for the July 23rd planning and zoning meeting?
I'm motion.
The second one.
Is it talking about the whole overlay thing?
Yeah.
Oh, I got some review.
Okay.
The last section needs to be taken out.
Public hearings.
What?
Are you guys going to approve the overlay?
No, no. No, no, it says this item is tabled for further review.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, just like.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying, but no, we did not approve. And nor are we tonight. All right, so a motion's been made, I'm all in favor? That's five of us, perfect. I'm going to pass that on to you so I don't get losing my stuff. All right, we have got a number of public hearings. So we're going to go with the principle that we did in the last meeting, have a public hearing, have discussion on that item, vote on that item, and then move to the next public hearing.
Would you like us to correct the agendas moving forward to reflect that?
Yes. Yes. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, I'm going now open the public hearings at 5:33. This is regarding the request to rezone the property located at 1113 Ren Street, acres point 387, tract C7 through 11, abstract A136, A136 Mylum County School, tract C711 from B2, general business, just commercial business district to an R2 and two family district. So first, is there any persons here not affiliated with the project who would like to speak on this subject? All right.
What's the location, where is it?
This is at the corner of Bernard, where you're coming around kind of catty corner from, it's actually.
It's on the map, it's on the map.
The map, it's the, it's that open lot, right there, coming around the corner, it's that open lot. There used to be a trailer on it.
Okay, that looks like, is that a pickleball court up in the left corner? I'm trying to gauge where it is.
So do you know where, so right across from, you're actually, right across from Big Rocks Park, you're coming around the corner.
Okay.
So you're hitting the straightaway that goes up Bernard Street to get to 67.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. Anybody involved with this particular project, we'd like to hear from you.
Sure.
If you'll come up to the podium.
Yeah.
If you can state your name and address, please.
Uh-huh, yeah, so my name is David Dickens. Address, I guess my residential address is 1478 County Road 409 in Nemo.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so we're just proposing today to rezone 1113 Ren Street from B2 to R2. So I've, I'm a owner and a principal for White Rock Homes and Design, and so we build residential homes, a lot of our, a lot of our construction right now is in county. This will be our first project in the city. So ideally, we purchased this lot and the vision for this lot was to offer some, like a nice residential option for, you know, whether it's someone that already lives in Glen Rose or someone that's looking to move to Glen Rose that wants to live centrally located close to downtown. Because ideally, the property's little, maybe like right under a half a mile walking distance from, from the square itself. So my experience, I built homes for David Weekley Homes from 2015 all the way through 2022 before we opened up our own company. There's some product that I built with them. It fits on a, it's a 25 foot wide by like 80 foot product. It's all alley load garages, two-story homes. Has a really great looking front elevation, so from the street, the homes would be, you know, pretty front elevations, whether it's stone, stucco or brick, and maybe side yard focused. So ideally, yeah, we would split this lot into three lots. Three of those single-family detached residential homes could fit on those three lots, they'd all be facing or fronting Bernard Street. We'd have an alley load garage coming off of Ren Street. And they're side yard focused homes, so instead of having your traditional backyard, the, the living space is going to be on the side yard. So it gives you a little bit of privacy from the neighbors and just kind of helps you maximize the lot. So typically, like in a more dense area, this product tends to work very well. It helps us get our overall price down and offer a home at a little bit of a lower price once we put it, basically put it to market. And it's something that, that typically works in a, in a great location like this lot, where someone that's looking to be close to downtown or, you know, wants to, you know, walk to Bates or, you know.
So our first part of this conversation is the zoning itself. So right now, it is zoned B2, which is our general commercial. When we go north to Robin, it's B2. When we go south from Ren Street to Bernard, it's B2. When we go across Bernard Street, we are in R1s. So the first thing we have to look at from a perspective of zoning is can we allow a zoning to be made that takes from a B2 to an R1 and not be considered spot zoning? So Allison, I would like to hear your view on this.
So the proposal is to change it from B2 to R2. The proposed, and as I wrote in the staff report, the proposed R2 zoning is inconsistent with the adjacent zoning. You'll see there is no R2 zoning in that area. R2 zoning is inconsistent with the general commercial designation of the future land use plan. The R2 zoning is inconsistent with the comprehensive plans as designations of floodplain and waterfront. And I can pull all that up if you'd like. And the proposed R2 zoning would be placed directly on a major collector route that is identified in the comprehensive plan as well.
Okay.
So Bernard Street is the major collector route?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, Rex, I didn't ask you to send that around because I was going to actually just let you kind of speak through it because you did some additional research and put some thoughts together that you, could you share those?
Well, just one of the questions I had is what's the access to the homes?
So in this case, it would be Ren Street.
Off of Ren Street, yeah, yeah, so we'd have an alley, so coming off Ren Street, there'd be a shared alley to service all the garages, yeah.
So if you guys are familiar with the, I'm assume, I'm going to make an assumption here, but Jim, the plan development unit up by college. Thank you, Holden Street. Similar to those kind of.
Similar, yeah, these will be a little bit, I think, longer and larger, but similar, yeah, similar lot size, yeah, yeah.
So if you guys have ever been down by the junior high, um, in the hospital, the backside of hospital, there's a road Holden that has four or five homes, they're kind of semi-connected, but they've got a back, they've got a garage, kind of a garage entrance in the back of the property, and then they share a driveway out to the road. So that is similar to what he is proposing. But that is not relevant to the rezoning.
Right, basically, you know, I've found the same things you did, Allison. In terms of it was inconsistent, one other concern was possible safety because it is a major road and then going in and out there.
So Allison, I will comment on that we have had Stan, the city's attorney, comment on spot zoning in the past. And in the past, he had given us the the opinion that if we're looking at residential to residential or business to business, whether it's a B1 or a B2 or a residential, R1, R2, that he felt, in his opinion, at that time, that it wouldn't have been considered a spot zoning if you take and put an R2 near R1s and not have anything else. I'm not sure that in this particular case I agree with that, but that has been his legal opinion in the past.
So would the R1 across the street influence the ability to?
So if this did not have the R1 across the street, this would be something we couldn't even consider.
Right.
But because there is an R1 across the street, based on our city attorney's past legal opinion, we can have the discussion.
Right.
And so this isn't about the properties that he's going to build, this isn't about anything to do with a house at this point. This is simply to do with a zoning decision on whether or not we see the value in making that change from B2 to R anything. I'm just going to say it that way.
Sure, yeah.
Well, the case for it is we have a shortage of housing and affordable housing and housing downtown, so that's, that's one of the, one of the cases for it. It doesn't comply, the lot size does not comply with R2, will it?
Correct, the proposed, once we get to the plat, the proposed R2 plat does not comply.
Okay, so I guess the first question is, what's the priority? What, what, what's the primary goal, is it for business to go down that road or is it for more housing?
Can I read some from the Glen Rose Comprehensive Plan? This kind of gave us the idea.
Yeah.
So policy to, to B1, just to promote new development, redevelopment and retrofitting within downtown, then here it just states downtown Glen Rose encompasses more than just the downtown square and is a significant cultural and historical area with surrounding residential homes. There will be new development on some vacant properties downtown, but redevelopment and retrofitting will take place too. Some structures that are dilapidated may be renovated or their properties could evolve into new buildings and uses. And so then the following are policy elements that should be incorporated to support zoning changes and development proposals that provide housing within downtown and to support developments that have innovative and or walkable mixed-use design. So obviously, I mean, it's up for y'all to interpret that, but I, I think that that would be a good fit for what the comprehensive plan is stating there. This, that's a good redevelopment opportunity and then it would serve a residential need that our city definitely needs and especially if we can highlight it close to downtown.
Allison, what's, what's the zoning on the other side of Lakeview?
Uh, that's a plan development, it's a PD, so I would have to pull the agreement to know what the rules are for the area. So I am, and, and I can zoom out a little more, you can see Megan.
Is it business or is it residential in that?
It's part of Oakdale, isn't it?
Oh, that's, that's part of Oakdale.
Oh, you're looking down, yeah.
Yeah, this PD area.
That's Oakdale.
Yeah. That's Oakdale.
Okay.
Okay, Megan, I'm specifically coming to you because as we know, a lot of that area has been zoned B2. However, a number of those houses
Yeah.
that are currently in a B2 zone were grandfathered, they're residential sitting in B2s.
Yes, they would be considered existing non-conforming.
Correct, so they're considered, so, so I'm just, I want all the facts out. So the block from where he is talking about, while it's B2 on the legal planning, there's grandfathered residential homes, so he's lining up against residential properties.
All those, all, all those properties on the other side of Lakeview are all houses.
Houses and a church and a, right, and a.
Yeah, so they're all residents.
Right, but even when you look between Lakeview and Bernard.
Those are all residential.
When you come up past Ren, it's resident, so you go where he is, you're, right, thank you. So Robin is residential. And then you go up another block to College and now we get in, out of the residential. So the housing right against Robin and right against Ren coming up, that's all residential.
Yeah.
It's just been grandfathered in to a, somebody who made a B2 zone right there.
And that corner, which is the, whatever the shopping, other than.
At some point in time. Yeah, that's the strip mall.
Its lanes and.
Yeah, that's the, the strip mall right there.
Right.
So, so you've got B2 on the other side of Ren. You have on the backside of the lot he's looking at, you have residential that's been grandfathered into somebody at some point in time changing the zoning of that street to B2 because it was originally residential.
Yes.
You have R1 on the other side. Then you go another block past Robbins, going up to College. You're getting into the businesses. And then from College on, it is all business.
Right.
So just laying everything out so everybody knows what's what.
Right.
How big is that lot?
Uh, it's a little over point four acres, it's a little over, about half an acre.
That's where the R2Ms are.
Yeah, it's about, about her amount, yeah.
Okay, those two.
Yeah, those are those duplexes that we don't.
Recently, okay.
Yeah.
We can do two to three, if we did a 45-foot lot, yeah.
Are you doing duplexes or?
It'd be a single-family detached.
We can't be having that discussion yet because we have to decide on the zoning first.
That's true.
Why, I figured that the type of housing that's going in there would probably depict a low-income housing units, which would play into some.
I understand exactly the thought process, but by law, we're not allowed to consider any of that in this first decision. So we, it sucks that we can't look at the bigger picture, but by law, we have to look at it in separate items.
Yeah, because it's almost like you're wanting us to put a present together, but we don't have all the pieces.
I know, that's what the law does, and so it, trust me when I tell you.
But I think in theory, you can talk about whether that could be an appropriate R1 or R2.
To me, I think that.
Allison, how has, in, in your experience in other cities, how has spot zoning been interpreted?
It varies widely.
So our city attorney's thought process not out of the norm?
It's not, if that's what our city attorney has advised us, then that's what I would go with.
Okay.
So why was R2M changed from a B2? Is that not spot zoning? And when, when did that change?
Those are the duplexes.
So it actually, so because of the, we, we allowed the R2M in because it was right next to the R1. And then across the street went because it was now next to the R2M. So they ended up getting both of those being tied to the R1.
Because to me, those are closer to businesses versus this, this area.
Everything, everything next to the PD, in between the PD and Lakeview Drive, what is that row of houses?
That's houses.
So what, what's the zone now, it's not part of the PD?
It is, the map shows it's part of the PD.
The plan development. But we don't know what it's on.
Our map may not be accurate, that it would be.
I'm working on that.
Yeah, it would be our, it would, it would have been an R1 at some point in time.
Right, so most of them were R1s and then somehow they, they got changed to B2s.
Yeah.
They're all different.
So I'm going to, so now that we've kind of discussed all the facts, does anybody have an opinion?
Are you closing the public hearing?
I guess I am. We're closing the public hearing.
Are you going to say anything?
Oh, no.
Well, no, because he can still talk to us because he's the part of the development, so.
I think it's R, is it R2, the front slate view right now? It's all like the pink color, at least on the future land use map.
So that's all R2, it's single and two-family residential.
On the future land use map.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so I think that's all R2.
Yeah. Which is.
Yeah.
It takes for us saying no to this.
Okay.
I think you say, you say no unless they counsel to refund the strategy of that stretch. At some point, they thought it was business.
Okay.
If not, if that's not the case and it's going to be residential, then we just rezone the whole.
Okay.
That's my opinion, it has many.
Unfortunately, we can't rezone the whole thing. We can only rezone owner by owner.
Right.
So.
So what is?
That's the question.
City Council, what's your strategic vision here, that, I've heard that, but I don't know what that is.
Well, we should.
Okay, so we, we've got a one, push it off to City Council.
What strategy is? Well.
Okay.
But we give them, I mean, so here's the two ways to look at it. If we say theoretically, well, realistically, R1 is on the other side of Lakeview, R1 is on the other side of Bernard. You've got this B2 patch in the middle and we, we say it's a jump ball.
And that's an R2 patch right there.
Yeah, all this is R2.
Oh, that's R2.
Right here.
Yeah, so, so it's really, it's really.
Spot of those, so, oh wow.
I could go either way, but I just think we.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I'm consistent, we're going to wind up going and doing this over and over.
So let me ask a different, a different way. So hang on, I've got two opinions over here.
Right.
Tony? What, where's your, where's your general opinion at this point?
Are we still on the public hearing or?
No, we've closed.
What time did we close the public hearing?
We closed the public hearing at 5:50.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
It's not a problem, not a problem.
I don't have a problem with it.
Not a problem with a push-up to City Council.
Well, it, it forces the issue to talk about what is the purpose.
It does. So here's, I'm going to, I'm going to come in with this and ask you guys my next question. And having gone through the dialogues about another business backing up and across the street and next door to a lot of residences, if it was left as a B2 and a volatile business came in, there would be a lot of limitations that we couldn't stop it, which is what we've experienced already.
And you can still experience that right now in the corner.
You're right, we could. But that corner piece faces away from the residences.
It's potentially surrounded by other businesses in the future, but.
As of right now, yeah, they're all houses.
If it's going to be houses, the people who buy the house are going to understand that.
Right.
So.
Oh, you think.
Should.
You are correct that we are, we are then sur, you know, surmising that people read.
As large as.
Or at least right around the neighborhood.
The city's plan, what he's wanting to do covers.
All right, so.
Other things we won't.
So we've got some opinions.
We need counseling.
Do we, do we have somebody who would like to make an emotion, whether it is to approve or recommend approval? Or do we have a motion to not recommend approval?
I, I move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We are going to recommend that that become an R2.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's, that's only the foothill you've gotten over, the next one.
Okay, well, hang on.
Yeah, this is, yeah, okay, the first, first, once every time, right?
Yeah. All right, so just to clarify, our recommendation will go to City Council. There will be, it will then be brought out as another public hearing at City Council. And you will have to again do your presentation on why it should be B2 or not B2, R2.
R2, yeah.
And then only again, once they have agreed to the zoning change, can you have discussions about the plats and anything else?
God, okay.
Okay?
Now, I would recommend updating the map that you showed to show all that residential, all the R2 more clearly.
The future land use map, yeah.
That sucks, that future land use map.
That's all we have.
Then.
Yeah, we didn't provide that, but.
Yeah, that's what's on the map, it's literally a hand-cut map.
I understand, I understand, but that, that was part of the brouhaha we had last time is that the map is not clear.
Okay.
And.
That was a different situation.
I understand, but. Same problem, so you.
Same issue.
You can do your own, own version from, for presentation purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, sounds good.
Okay. All right, we are now going to open the public hearing at 5:56 for regarding a request to replat on the property located at 1113 Ren Street as submitted by Teresa McGee, Texas Surveying and Engineering, Inc., acres point 387, tract C711, abstract A136, Mylum County, tract C7 through 11. Is there anybody not involved with this project that would like to speak on this subject? So technically, I'm supposed to close the public hearing now at five, we'll call it 5:57. And now, David, if you would like to come back up or if there's somebody else coming up to speak on behalf of this?
Hi, how are you guys doing today?
Good.
This evening, sorry. We're proposing three lots, we.
Need to give your name.
Oh, sorry, Teresa McGee with Texas Surveying and Engineering Incorporated at 104 South Walnut Street, Weatherford, Texas, 76086. We're proposing three lots and that was dependent upon the zoning, the rezoning going through. They would be for residential usage. And of course, we would seek variances on the lot sizing as, as well as the other features that do not meet current standards if we do get approval for the rezoning specifically.
All right, so take me through your plan and highlight where you're going to need a variance.
Lot sizing specifically, it says 60 feet and we're proposing roughly 45 feet, a little bit more on the south lot where it's in a Zone AE floodplain. The, so that would basically be the lot with itself, the length is fine. We're proposing all access for driveway purposes only off of Ren Street and that would be dedicated through the plat itself. And then we have a green space easement area that would be for the side view housing as well. So from what I believe, it would be for the overall square footage of the lot, which is supposed to be 6,000 square feet as well. So we would seek a variance for the square footage as well as the lot size.
What's the size of the green space?
Uh, the green space, we have 14 feet that shares on both sides.
Okay. R2. Allison?
Yes, ma'am.
Can a triple be added into an R2?
Oh, they're not, they're not detached, yeah.
Okay, so they're individual.
They're detached, yes, ma'am.
Okay. They're, they're single-family detached, there's a seven-foot green space easement on each side of each lot.
Okay.
Yes. What is our current easement for between in an R2 side? They would meet the, the seven-foot side yards.
They'd meet that side yards, yes.
So it's simply the property. Frontage? It's the frontage instead of the 60.
Correct.
So I. The width of the property and control square footage of the property. Footage per property. And what is our max square footage per property? I'm, I'm sorry, my computer crashed yesterday. Yeah, we can.
The minimum lot size is 6,600 square feet.
How do you see the people getting to like the lot one? I know there's that utility easement you're talking about being the alleyway. How many, how many car parking do you see on each lot?
So there would be a attached two-car garage, you'd have an approach coming. So there would be an attached two-car garage, um, and you'd have an approach coming off of the alley feed into the garage, and so the, the homes themselves would be about 80 feet total length.
Okay.
So you've got about 140 feet of length on the lot.
Alright, so you do have a garage anticipated in.
Yeah, two cars actually, yeah.
So the square footage for a R2 lot for a single family, 6,600 square feet for the lot size.
And it said 7,500, scroll, can you scroll back down?
7,500 for duplex.
For duplex.
For duplex, okay, but for a single family, 66.
For a single family, 66.
And then, the requirement of 60-foot width.
60-foot lot width.
Okay.
Uh huh.
And.
And then 25.
Do we have a, do we have a, based on that 6,600, what's the maximum square footage a building on it could be? Do we know that?
No, they're not going to push the maximum at all.
Okay.
They have a requirement for a minimum square footage of 800.
That's what I've, got it. Um. Flood plain. Let's talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. It touches the, uh, proposed lot 3 block 100, and from what I understand, we would be avoiding building in that area altogether. Which is acceptable.
Okay.
And you can certainly see on the map, the blue line that cuts across the corner of lot 3, that's the, that's the floodplain line. So if they build outside of the floodplain line, they're fine.
Okay, well, I see that lot 3.
Yes, lot 3.
Right there, and I'm looking at the wavy blue line coming across, they've got building line in it.
That's their setback lines, that they're showing where their buildable area is.
Got it, okay. So you are going to.
So they would be building on their back.
On this lot to avoid that floodplain line. Okay. Which is why it's just a little bit wider than the other two lots that are proposed. Okay.
If they're finished floor 614, shouldn't that be fine? The back miller.
But to build within that blue line, then they have to do an elevation certificate and everything if they're staying out of the blue line.
They're good.
They're, they're much easier.
Has a, tracing in the floodplain.
And it affects their insurance and everything if they're within that line.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Massively. Jim, can I have your public words hat on? Do you have any thoughts on this? From street access, water, water, anything?
Um, I, I mean, will, will we bring the water from across Bernard Street? For water service, it would be probably from the alleyway out.
Okay.
To where we're in.
Any concerns?
No, but I have a question about, on a corner lot, is there, is there setback?
Further?
On, on both streets?
They, they have addressed that in their plot.
So is it, is it seven feet?
No, on that corner lot.
Yeah.
Because they are.
I think I have marked that on the comments, that they have to show a different setback.
Visibility typically, yeah, same.
Right.
Uh, R2 zoning will require a 20-foot, 25-foot side yard setback on the corner lot, so I have addressed that in the comments, too, though. This is not their final plot.
Just out of curiosity, knowing that, do you have a plan?
Um, we have another plot that's been proposed, and then we have another layout that is proposed as well.
Okay.
That would bring it to two lots to increase buildability for the area specifically.
So, thank you, Jim, for bringing that out. Because if I'm looking at this current plat, what is your setback off Ren Street on that lot 3?
We're currently showing it as seven-foot bump line.
And if we go up to the other side on lot 1, you're seven feet there.
I would like to add that this lot is slightly unique in that this property is slightly unique in that it is setback further than the neighboring lots. So this, this property line right here on lot 3 is not at Ren Street, it is setback from Ren Street.
It's almost 15, 20.
Yeah. I, I don't know how the lot lines felt like that over there.
Somebody's going out, I don't know who that's.
Yeah, it, that's, that's, that 25-foot setback that they're required from Ren Street, um, it, it would be worth a discussion to include part of this area out here as that 25-foot setback, because that's just dead space out there, it's and doesn't line up with the other lots, and it does not line up with Ren Street. Right, and that was per the deed, that's the RPLS findings as well, that area was not included when this was deeded and initially created. Yeah, there, there is an issue over there that needs to be addressed, in their favor.
Okay, so that solves the problem on that side, but it doesn't solve the problem on the other side.
The other side is neighboring another lot, not here.
Okay.
So it doesn't meet.
Okay.
Yeah, seven feet is fine.
That's another, that's other property. So when we're looking at this, their line comes over here. So their line is like over here, and then there's another property right here before it hits Ren Street.
Yeah, so we've got a jump room, if that's included. Yeah, on this.
Yeah.
Oh, this is residential.
Alright, does anybody have thoughts on a plat of this nature?
So is it two or three, but I heard two.
No, this is the three, I, I, if we got shot down for three, we were gonna rework some plans. Yeah, we were gonna rework some plans if that happened.
So.
Okay.
So Allison.
Yes.
If that part of Ren Street, it seems to be.
No man's land.
Yeah, this area up here.
Yeah, demilitarized zone.
Yeah.
If that's included, do, does it meet the requirements? Or?
Do you happen, do you, anybody know what that dimension is down here?
It's 21.2 feet.
So 21 plus 7, we would meet the 28.
Plus 75, mean 28 feet.
Pop, so it's possible.
That's possible.
So proving that, uh, with the conditions, that that can be.
But they're asking for a variance.
Right.
And it does not meet the definition of a variance.
Correct.
And right now, the city owns it from it's on the right of way.
So, I don't know who owns that.
We'll have to.
I would assume it's right of way because it's not delineated with property lines.
Yeah.
That's what we discovered, is it was at one time created for.
So if, let, let's come back and let's say that it turns out that somebody actually does own that. The setback, if that is owned by another owner, they only need the seven-foot setback, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Cause it's no longer a corner lot.
Cause it's no longer a corner lot. Okay. Okay, I, I'm because we are looking at this now as the plat, so we're talking about the number of houses, and we get further into this with, you know, what kind of housing is this gonna be, pricing, et cetera, does it meet our city's needs? So ballpark arrange, if this was a three-home lot, what would be kind of your asking price for the homes?
What's the size of the homes?
But with these three.
It's about 1,900 square feet, over tag, bad condition, not including the two-car garage with the torches. Um, you have a two-story home, depending on the level and finish out on the interior, probably starting like quite low 400s.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a pretty nice product, and we try to match the exterior facade with some of this sort of stuff you see.
There's no two stories anywhere in that area. I would have a problem with two stories. I see that you've provided what looks to be a second option.
That's with the B2 zoning.
That was for the B2 zone. Okay.
Yeah, they were. They were in base in case the rezon wasn't approved.
Yeah, those would be, those would have to be two stories as well, if we build the, the four-lot condominiums on that spec-in option, um, just to get the square footage and a garage attached on that lot.
So, I'm gonna speak from my.
It's a couple of two-story, but there is a, there's a, yeah. I used to live over there.
So I'm gonna speak from my own opinion, I am not representing, you know, planning and zoning right now, but my concern um, is when we talk about and you're using, you know, the housing need, and Glenn Rose from the Comprehensive Plan, a $400,000 home is not what our community needs. We need a, we are a tourist community, we have hourly workers, um, who, um, are making 15, 18 at the most per hour, and they're not the ones that would be buying these homes. A $400,000 home, we're talking about a white-collar commuter who has a lot of options for that pricing of a home in our community in a less controversial area.
Yeah, we could definitely build that type of housing as well. Um, it would just, unfortunately, have to be on a different different piece of ground, just based on the cost of the, the dirt itself up there. Make it economically feasible, you know.
I under, I, I completely can understand your dilemma, I'm simply, as I was saving, speaking my mind, not for the commission.
Got you.
So, commission, what is your thoughts?
I don't think 400 is purely a white-collar.
Okay.
Bracket, but.
Speaking from my own mind.
Same.
So, eh, you're right, it could be.
I mean, cost of building houses these days.
It's, it's expensive, you're right.
That's.
So then I come.
Fairly affordable.
So then I come back to, what's our best use for this land, and we've already just agreed to rezone it? And we.
With the consideration of the extra 20-foot, however many variances that takes up, be alright with it.
Okay. Megan?
I'm okay with it because of the neighborhood area, and then I can see that I feel like some of the houses behind it might eventually come available, and maybe I could see more development there, possibly. Some of those houses are a lot older, and I don't know how long those are, I don't know.
Okay, so I mean, there are some pretty cute remodeled houses.
There are, yeah, and then.
I agree.
Some, you know, eventually might have a lot of space and we could do more.
Okay. Rex?
I'm just doing some calculations.
Okay. Greg?
Yeah, so it's, it'd be a $2,100 mortgage payment on a $400,000 home.
You want that? Oh.
If you put 20% down. Yeah.
Yeah, even the consideration of doing the three lots versus the two, that helps us lower, you mean 80% of the price of the home as well, you know, by splitting up. Through the details.
Out of curiosity, if we had said no on the zoning change and went with the four-lot option, where would that have landed?
Uh, for like a, the attached four-pack type product, I'd have to put pen to paper, but it'd still be, it wouldn't be quite as much as a single-family detached, but it'd still be close.
Okay.
Just with our construction costs and price of the job.
Sure. Real estate, have you looked at how fast these types of houses are moving in this area?
It could be.
Um, really, this is a kind of a unique product, but I know they, they had a couple off of Holden Street.
Yeah.
And they seem to have done pretty well. Um, obviously, that was a while back, but they were built.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense that this is kind of general, um, area. I've got a concept of, of a, of a plan that we build, if y'all can not pay attention to the color of it.
Sure.
But.
We can do that.
Yeah. My legs fall asleep, but this is kind of general idea of what those, that type of product looks like. You can do it with or without balconies, that saves you some time if you don't do a balcony, but.
Yeah.
It all fits like on a 25-foot lot.
Yeah, it's nice looking.
You know, side yard focused.
And it would be.
So are you helping to already have a possible buyer interest before you build them?
Not necessarily, yeah, we probably start them and then list them for sale, yeah.
That's very similar to my, like, a house down the street from me, where they built this.
Yeah.
Little hall, yeah.
Very popular in, in more urban markets.
It was, cause that was, you know, down came a lot, ours, King Arthur, there's a smaller lot.
Alright, so, i- if you guys have, discussion-wise, kind of are all in favor, do, is somebody gonna make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
The motion was to approve? Yeah, can you say that?
Well, I, I move to approve.
Okay, I second.
Move to recommend.
Recommend, yeah, move to recommend, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? It'll be a 4-1? Alright, um, so again, what this means is that, um, we will be providing the recommendation for approving this first, first plat to City Council. Um, the next City Council meeting is September 9th. So, and at 5:30, um, here in these offices. So you will need to be present and make your presentation to them for the final approvals to move forward with everything. Okay? Absolutely. Alright. Public hearing number three? Yes. Let me put that over, yeah, got it. Just keeping track of my, my notes. Alright, public hearing number three is at 6:18. You guys are free to stay, or if you choose to not. You're in the.
Thank you.
Vacant. Alright, so this is a public hearing regarding recommendations for remitting ordinance 3.17 fences to include definitions for the commercial privacy fencing. This was a tabled topic from last month that we went, um, and took a lot of the feedback from the audience at that time, and um, had a separate workshop amongst ourselves to kind of talk through everything, and have come back with, um, some recommendations that I basically took your document and kind of just streamlined it a little. Um, so does anybody have questions, concerns, thoughts publicly that is out there wanting to talk? What's the subject? The, oh, the privacy fencing that I just announced, the privacy fencing. No, everybody's good? We're gonna go into discussion? Alright, public hearing is closed at 6:19. Alright, um. Did you guys have a chance to read through this? Do you think I captured the general essence of what we wanted?
Yeah, I, I just provided some.
Yeah, do you wanna kind of go through some of that?
Yeah, I can.
Would you please?
There's no way to, there's no way to pull it up, or?
If you.
If you email it to me, I should be able to.
Screen share. Alright. Tony, when you looked and read this, did that kind of meet the standards that you had built to? Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything.
Also, I don't think I have your-
A-L-I-S-O-N dot C-O-U-C-H.
Okay.
Okay. And just a, a note of clarification, because I was a descending vote on that, I will, like the Supreme Court, give a descending opinion.
Oh.
It is, if any of you also do a descending vote, you will be given that opportunity to give counsel your why so that you, they can understand your viewpoint of why you didn't feel it was appropriate to move forward. So just FYI. Okay? Did you send it?
I did.
I do not have it yet.
Okay. Well, Glenn Rose still, it's the polyexpress version of email.
There we go. Okay.
All right. All I did was just make it easier to read so that if the public were to read it, they wouldn't get confused like I did earlier.
Yes, we need curves.
Yeah, ordinances are tough. So, the city of Glen Rose has rules for fences so that neighbors, neighborhoods look good, businesses stay attractive and drivers can see safely around corners. Here's the simple breakdown. Number one, you need a permit. For building a fence, you must get a fence permit from the city building, city's building official. Small fee applies, see the schedule. Number two, what you can, what you can build with, fences must be made of normal materials like wood, vinyl, chain link brick, other approved types. If your property is in the historic preservation overlay, the fence materials must be approved by the preservation commission. Number three, residential front yard fences, solid fences, no gaps, up to 30 inches high. Chain link or partially see-through fences up to 48 inches high. Rotten iron fences up to 60 inches high with posts at least eight feet apart. No fence may block a public right of way. Corner lot visibility. Fences on corner lots can go up to 72 inches high, six feet, but they must not block visibility within 30 feet of an intersection or driveway. I'm just taking, I'm just taking what was provided and just trying to make it easier to read. The city has a drawing exhibit A that shows the sightline, commercial and industrial fences. Businesses that want privacy, screening or security must submit a site plan and detailed fence plans for approval. Commercial privacy fences, this is a new definition. These fences are for security and screening around commercial industrial properties. Allowed materials, treated wood, pine, cedar, redwood, concrete, masonry or approved composite materials, minimum height, six feet tall only if approved. Structural rules apply. Post size, depth, spacing, rails and picket thicknesses to make sure fences are safe and sturdy. Penalties, breaking fence rules can mean a class C misdemeanor with fines up to 2,000 per day until fixed. Bottom line, if you're putting up a fence in Glen Rose, you need a permit, follow the height and material rules, keep corners clear and visible and meet strict, and meet stricter standards for businesses. So, it's kind of the-
The gist.
My, my simple-
Which I actually like the idea that we have the full ordinance, but then we also have kind of the plain speed.
Yeah, that's the, the ultimate goal of the building department is to create handouts for individual items like this.
This is, this is right in the-
Flows right in with that.
Perfect.
I do have a couple of quick comments, questions, um, just a couple of language cleanups.
Sure.
In the, in section A, um, historic preservation overlay should be historic preservation overlay district, add that district to the end. And then must be approved by, it should be historic preservation commission to keep that language consistent throughout the code of ordinances.
Okay.
Um, I noticed that, and this came up um, in my first month working here, we're, we are not limiting the height of fences. If somebody came in and wanted to build a 20 foot tall residential fence in their yard, I don't have a height limit. I have to tell them, yes, you can build a 20 foot tall fence in your backyard. Our only height limit currently is the front yard.
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. So do they have a preference on the backyard height?
I will tell you. I'm just saying, um, building code height right now, um, without a building permit is maximum seven feet tall. Once you go over seven feet, then you need a building permit and construction plans and all of that.
I think that sounds like a perfect limit for us.
Is that residential only?
That's all fence heights in the building code. Yeah.
So, commercial says six feet minimum.
But no maximum.
Do that say maximum, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, because it's not maximum, because if it is a highly industrial area-
And they want a 10 foot fence.
And they need a 10 foot fence, they need to be able to do the 10 foot fence. They just have to follow the building code.
Then they would have to follow the building code for plans and design and all that.
For plans above that, correct.
Okay, so that's fine. I just wanted to address that we have no maxims.
Yeah, no, on commercial, I don't believe a maximum should happen. On residential, I'm 100% in favor of the maximum, so.
And then I, I just, the, the structural standards that were provided, um, there's some, some comment back to the building code. The building code does not have requirements for fences. Um, so any reference to the building code requirements for fences, that should be removed. And you do have in the pickets section, um, you have listed a spacing so a four inch sphere cannot pass through. That, that's only a code requirement for guardrails in the building code. That's, has nothing to do with fences. Um, it, it's your option if you wanna keep that in there. I just want to, you guys to understand that that's not building code at all.
Come, come back to me really quick. When you made the comment that building code inherent any reference to following building code, where, oh.
So are the general materials?
Got it.
But then all of this stuff about a 10 inch diameter pier, two foot deep for the footings, if you guys came up with that from somewhere else, just understand that's not in the building code. We do not regulate that in the building code.
Okay, so the plastic, okay, all wood is construction grade two or better, treated or naturally resistant. Metal is hot dipped galvanized steel. Plastic must meet manufacturer standard specifications and city building code approval. So you're saying, uh, the word code is where the problem is.
Yeah, there's no building code for fences.
So if we just take the word code out, so, so the city building official.
Okay.
Approval.
And then, um, I also just wanna know if you guys are requiring grade two lumber. Usually fence lumber is not even grade two lumber. So if you are requiring grade two lumber, you, that's a step up from what you go to Home Depot and get for fence pickets.
Tony, I'm looking at you. Do you not feel my beaming eyes on you?
I'm used to it.
What? What?
I don't know that a lumber grade is important for fencing.
Yeah. For most residential, as long as it meets the materials, not necessarily grade.
Okay, so if we just simply say all wood is, it, all wood is construction grade or all wood is treated or naturally resistant?
They're treated, they're naturally resistant.
Got it? Any other suggestions?
Just back to that four inch sphere in the pickets. That's not a building code requirement for fencing. If, if you guys want to include that, but now you've made it so that nobody can have wide picket fencing. Rotten iron sometimes is much larger than four inch sphere.
So I, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, that's more of a privacy fence standard.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can just strike that whole spacing issue out and leave the minimum one inch thickness as the picket. Or do we wanna check the picket out altogether?
Take it out altogether.
Yeah, that's good. I gave you this for privacy.
Okay, that's fine.
What about covering on the fence? That was on one of the things, cause I know somebody that has that. But it's on addressing it, right?
I'm sorry, what?
If I cover my fence?
I don't think we addressed that at all.
But it wasn't the other in yours.
Yeah. So you're talking about like if they're putting, um,
Chain link with a mesh on it?
Chain link with mesh or something? Um. Thoughts?
It was in here, chain link or solid base material covering, uh, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
So our, kind of our goal here is to take away chain link from any commercial.
Right.
Residential.
So this was just straight commercial?
Well, so is all of this structural standards supposed to be part of the commercial privacy fence definition?
Yes.
So nothing in this structural standards has anything to do with a residential fence?
No, this is all commercial fence.
Those are down there, okay.
Well, B is residential.
Three is? Where it says partially see-through.
I think maybe we need to step back and revise it.
Take the residential part out?
Well, we have to, because this is the whole fencing ordinance.
Right.
What we were attempting to do was to provide a much more detailed idea of what the commercial privacy fence was because that was the missing definition that we wanted to solve so that moving forward, we had it handled right.
Well, there should be two sections for residential and commercial privacy or not.
Well, I don't know that I would ever call a fence in residential privacy.
Oh, there are people that absolutely want a residential privacy fence. They have a neighbor with a camera in the backyard, looking in their backyard. They absolutely want a privacy fence.
We're gonna retable this. We go back to the tallying board again.
Cause I'll say, thinking of that same situation, there is a camera facing that yard.
Okay.
They're facing each other's yards now, at this point.
Okay, well, I've got notes on this.
I was thinking about that when you were talking about the height of the fence.
Okay, so I have some notes that we're gonna go back and then now, so what we would like to do this next round is clarify residential versus commercial rules. Did I, am I expressing this right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Do commercial construction standards or residential construction standards?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make one.
I'm on board. We got closer? But the whole idea of us taking our time and getting this right, um, I think matters more than the speed. All right, so, um, with that note, we are tabling this again.
Somebody motion to table?
Commercial, we also need to.
I don't think we have to motion to table.
Security.
I think you do.
Okay, we're gonna motion to table. All motion to table.
Second.
There you go.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. Okay. That's obvious. Moving on. All right, we are opening the public hearing for item number four at 6:36. This is the public hearing regarding recommendations for amending 14.02.005 definitions. Anybody in the audience have discussions, thoughts, ideas that they want to share?
Unrelated, but still related. Why do you close the public hearing before we hear any discussion on the matter?
Public hearing is strictly-
Especially when there's a public speaker that might divulge more information of the matter and that might arise other questions to the crowd or concerns.
It's two separate issues. We have a public hearing which allows the public to speak. We close the public hearing. Then we open the item for discussion and the public can still come up and discuss at the discussion as well.
Should I have once heard her say it's open for discussion today? I've heard, uh, publicly.
Oh, I, I apologize. We don't always run as tight of a strict Robert's rules. So if you have any comments, what time, whatever, we have a formal public hearing piece. And then as you've seen, we do include you guys in the dialogue, so feel free to speak up.
Okay.
Even if I have forgotten to say, anybody would like to be a part of the discussion. Okay?
I just wanted to clarify that. I didn't explain it on a couple things because you already closed it.
Did you?
No, we don't need to revisit.
Are you sure? Are you positive?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I'm happy to let you speak.
Okay, I will wait.
I am very sorry that that was not, we only run a very strict Robert's rules when it gets unruly in here. Beyond that, we try to be actually very open in back and forth dialogue. So, my apologies that that was not made obvious to you. Okay, so with nobody having anything to formally speak about in the public hearing, the public hearing is now closed at 6:38. At which point we are now opening the items for discussion and allow anybody that would like to speak to speak. I went through this again based off of our back and forth thing. Um, I highlighted the changes on the document. Um, the one that, uh, had come up at great length during our prior, um, meeting that tabled this change was the idea of the accessory building.
Right, yeah.
So.
And I provided kind of a-
If we scroll down a little bit more.
Now, this is not, again, not meant to be an ordinance. It's meant to make it-
The cheat sheet.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back for one second before you get into that. Um, because I do wanna just state, since this is not a whole entire ordinance, an accessory building is a single family residential district is a subordinate structure located on the same lot as the principal single family dwelling intended for use by family members of the occupants of the main dwelling. Such a building may provide limited living accommodations for family members but must not be used for short-term rentals such as vacation rentals, Airbnbs or transient lodging, or for long-term rental by non-family members thereby ensuring occupancy is limited to relatives and preventing commercial or unrelated residential uses. I think that when we came up with that idea of statement, we addressed the majority of the concerns that the previous audience in our last meeting had, which is stating they can make no income from it. We have not stated that. We've simply stated that you can't make it a true second dwelling by unrelated family.
Well, I think one of the things we did say is that it can't be short-term rental.
True, and that.
Right.
Okay, so with that, would you like to, uh, do your cheat sheet?
Yeah, it's up there, we can-
I still have this, cause I was just trying to look at this, like how can we lawfully restrict it to family only?
Because it's only an R1, one single family home, so.
But how do you, like, it says-
There's not an enforcement method from a code enforcement standpoint.
And the fair housing and property, like I just don't wanna get into-
So the- So the issue is, so the issue is that you are allowed to have a, and I'm just going to, a pool cabana, a guest house.
Yeah, I still don't see how legally we can enforce it, right?
I can't.
Okay, so from an R, okay, so from an R-one standpoint, our definition is a single-family home. What you are not, by the definition of R-one, allowed to do is have a second dwelling on the property being used as a second home.
I just think if we open it up and say that a family member can rent, you can easily get sued because anybody can technically rent then, right?
So the whole thing that we were trying to solve, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, I'm just stating it all out. The whole thing that we were trying to solve was when we stated you can make no income.
Right.
There was a riot. So we were trying to get to the same way of stating make no income without meaning that a family member couldn't stay in a pool cabana. And if the family member was under the table giving money to somebody, what are we going to do? But this is where I come back. The whole thing is in A-R-one, an accessory building cannot be a dwelling. Period, the end.
Right.
We were trying to be, we were trying to be a little bit more flexible in that definition.
I just don't know if you can legally, right? Am I?
Well, sure you can.
You can, you can restrict.
We can legally say you don't get anybody living in your accessory building.
Well, here's, and what I asked you about was.
I will go back to you. Hang on one second.
Was we needed to change this definition from accessory building because that's a storage shed and that's a pool house. You needed to change it to accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Because right now we keep calling it accessory building and that's, that's a shop, that's a, that's a garage, that's a storage shed. And we have two other definitions in the code already of accessory buildings.
So by utilizing an accessory dwelling unit.
I mean, because I'm just looking, it's like, yeah, a role such as this from the Fair Housing Act could be seen as discrimination against unrelated individuals. And I mean, I feel like you're, I would just run it through a lawyer.
Oh, no, we can do that. That's not a problem.
Or I would.
Yeah, that's not a problem. You, you were going to speak.
I was asking what brought this discussion to table. I know the last meeting did, I was here in class meeting, but
Right.
what originally brought into discussion? And is this the matter that you're supposed to dissolve yourself from because it's all about the interest?
No. No, this is not the matter that the overlay is, it is.
I know the overlay is a separate thing, but this is a.
The reason this was brought out.
You're trying to stop Airbnbs.
No, I'm not trying to stop Airbnbs.
On people's properties, correct?
I, I am not trying to stop Airbnbs.
But that was discussed just now in this ordinance, correct?
You're right, and I am allowed to have discussions? Okay, here's what we are actually trying to do. What came about was that we have a home that has built a she shed and that turned it into a second dwelling against our ordinances. And yet, their property, but it's an R-one property which is only allowed to have.
When you start telling people what they can and cannot do with their own property.
As an R-one, you can only have one dwelling per property, period, the end. And we can make it as simple as that. But we were trying to be kind, that a lot of people would like to be able to have a guest house that allows them to help care for elderly family members or other people. This is nothing, honestly, in my book, had nothing to do with short-term rentals. But because that feedback came in from the last meeting, we were trying to explain that you cannot have a second dwelling in an R-one on the same lot, period, the end. And yet, a lot of our residents and community has done that.
Yeah.
So we can either be mean and go into every single one of those properties and check the code and shut them down.
Sounds like a, you know, a lot of people petition that entire lawyer together to come after the city.
You're right, which is why we don't want to do that. So what we've been trying to do is find a balance to prevent new happening. That's all we're trying to do. And so because the feedback from the audience was very much about my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, my this, my that, we came back and tried to include that as an option.
Can I ask what's so bad about this thought of it? Like what's so, what's the turnoff?
The turnoff of having a second dwelling?
Yeah.
You need to rezone to an R-two, period, the end.
Right. It's zoned one way.
You're zoned, if you're zoned as an R-one, it is one dwelling. There's setback rules, there's frontage rules.
If the whole couple are doing it, wouldn't that kind of tell you that maybe there's a need for it if you find so many of them doing it?
I didn't necessarily say we found so many. We had, we had people speak up. Whenever, if we looked at every single house in this community, I'm sure we'd find a small percentage of it. What we're trying to do is find a solution that preserves what R-one is. R-one is a single-family residential home, no other dwellings on the property. And that is the ordinance.
Right.
We're trying to be flexible in the ordinance and loosen it up just a little bit to accommodate an aging population, to accommodate some of the needs that we see. And by allowing that.
If you look at Texas Senate Bill fourteen twelve, we can't. The local government cannot determine.
You can't discriminate against.
You cannot say who can be there.
So they're right. We're going back to there is no dwelling allowed, there is.
There's either yes or a no, yeah.
Initially, the parentheses.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to.
And by non-family, and just.
So by, by doing that, we violate what an R-one is. So if that is what the state law is, then we don't allow a second dwelling at all on anybody's R-one property. If they need to build a second dwelling, they have to rezone. And that would be the way that we solve this.
Or, yeah, or we change it. Now you can have one in an R-one. Or stuff, especially use permit.
Then it's not an R-one.
Then it's not an R-one.
So it sounds like we need to consult with legal before we move any further.
Yeah, so I've got Texas Senate Bill fourteen twelve, political subdivisions, like cities or counties.
This isn't even a consult with an attorney. This is a straight-up, we just leave R-one, R-one.
Yeah, it says based on employment, relationship, familial status.
So R-one is R-one. We delete any concept of a definition of a dwelling unit. Accessory buildings cannot be used for living.
So there's no accessory dwelling units on an R-one?
Accessory buildings by definition cannot be used as a dwelling.
That simplifies it.
Okay, because we are not making that change on that particular subject item, we will move on to the next subject item that we came up with under here. Yes, sir.
A quick question based on that. How hard is it to get converted to R-two?
Because you're an R-one, again, from the conversation we had earlier tonight, because our city attorney has previously given us a legal opinion that R-one, R-two does not create a start, a spot zoning. It's simply a matter of filling out the paperwork, filling, paying the fee, and coming before the hearings.
So they just have to come before you all?
They have to come before us and they have to go to city council.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if that's what is the legal option for us to follow, then that's what has to happen. All right. One of the things when we were talking about the overlay and kind of what kinds of businesses that we were going to be seeking. One of the thought processes when we talked about was like artisan-based businesses. Where somebody may have a skill and is demonstrating the skill, but is also selling the product. And so I simply wanted to make sure we had an added definition to that. That is not currently in existence in our definitions. So that's what this one is. And you raised your hand.
No.
Nope, okay. So the idea was that an artisan retail shop is a retail establishment where skilled craftspeople known as artisans create, display, and sell goods. They're typically homemade or made using traditional techniques rather than mass production. These shops often feature unique, high-quality products that may be functional or decorative such as jewelry, clothing, pottery, home decor, furniture, and art. The hallmark of artisan shops is the originality and craftsmanship of the item, often reflecting personal creativity and attention to detail. Artisan retail shops emphasize supporting local talent, preserving traditional skills, and offering customers the opportunity to connect with the makers and learn about the inspiration and techniques behind their products. They are distinct from regular retail outlets that stock mass-produced goods, fostering a sense of community and investment in small business, correct? We're out, just adding it as a definition so that as we go to schedule of uses, we can discuss that as a allowable business type in wherever zones we want to put it. Does anybody have a problem with adding that definition?
Yes, that's good.
Can I have a motion to approve the addition of that definition?
A motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we had a lot of discussion about assisted living facility that came up. And through our discussions and the feedback from the audience, the allowing it in a residential home concern was allowing less than four, which didn't require the state. So assisted living facility, which can include a residential home, is defined as establishment that provides food and shelter to four or more persons who are unrelated to the proprietor of the establishment. Such a facility offers personal care services and may include the administration or supervision of medication. It may also provide limited skilled nursing skills, including coordination of care, assessment of residential, resident needs, and temporary skilled nursing treatment for minor illnesses or emergencies. Key elements of assisted living in this residential context include furnishing food and shelter to at least four unrelated residents, providing personal care services like assistance with feeding, dressing, moving, bathing, and other personal needs, administration or supervision of medication by licensed or authorized persons, potential provision of limited skilled nursing services as defined by state regulations, emphasizing personal dignity, autonomy, independence, and privacy while supporting residents to age and place with varying levels of care based on their needs. This is governed by the state law, specifically Health and Safety Code, Chapter two forty-seven, which sets out these definitions and the regulatory framework for assisted living facilities. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. You're just double-checking.
Gun manufacturers?
Yep, that one. Okay, again, a brand-new definition that has not existed in the past. Gun manufacturing is defined as a business or activity of making firearms or ammunition suitable for use, typically involving assembling individual firearm components so that they become functional weapons. It includes processes such as machining, molding, casting, forging, and additive manufacturing to create firearm frames or receivers or to make them suitable for use in a firearm designed to expel a projectile or by explosive action. The activity usually requires a license if performed as a regular business for the purpose of sale or distribution. It also covers manufacturing actions like building firearms from parts, modifying firearms in ways that alter their performance or durability, and preparing firearms for resale. Manufacturing is distinguished from gunsmithing and that the latter typically involves repairing or modifying firearms for, for customers without the intent of commercial sale, whereas manufacturing is done primarily for livelihood and profits through sales or distribution.
So you can have a gunsmith that also sells firearms. At most, you. Or they sell collectibles or ones like that. Now they're not manufacturing them up there.
I would say that that would fall under our artisan definition.
Okay.
Right?
May need to clarify.
I think you could add a gunsmith definition as per ATF definitions. But I think for the purposes of this, gun manufacturing is not. I think you have fit.
Covered it?
Yeah.
For manufacturing.
Okay, so where is my list? Add, add list for guns. We're going to post this as is and then add a gunsmith later. Or if you would like to modify a motion to, and say, including gunsmithing definition per ATF law, or we can pass it all at once. So whoever would like to make that motion? Reps, can you state how you want us to handle that motion?
To, to approve the manufacturing, is that what we're?
And do we want to add the gunsmithing?
And add the gunsmithing.
By the ATF definition?
As a separate.
Do I have a second on that? All in favor?
Ice cream truck.
I don't know, because I had it.
I had someone ask.
I didn't miss come out, okay.
So it was brought forward, it was brought forward that our mobile food truck does not actually qualify that ordinance for the mobile food truck would not.
To be mobile.
To be mobile is not inclusive of what an ice cream truck needs.
Yeah, the mobile food truck is specific to, or the mobile food truck ordinance is specific to stationary.
Yeah, so.
It gives definitions of food carts and ice cream trucks and all that.
So I move it and I stay here.
But it doesn't.
A little bit later.
Yes, okay.
So ice cream truck is somebody.
There is somebody who would like to, so we have to figure out so that we can allow them to drive down the street and have a food, an ice cream truck. We have to add a definition.
I think that's charming on the.
It looks, yeah, yeah. It's, it's right up the alley of a tourist town.
It's nostalgic.
Yep, and I, an ice cream truck is a motorized vehicle from which ice cream and other frozen desserts are sold, often while moving through neighborhoods or parked in areas where people gather such as parks. The vehicle usually contains a commercial freezer and a serving window for selling prepackaged or sometimes soft-serve. Ice cream products must apply for a permit through the mobile food truck ordinance. That's how I came up to word this.
Yeah, that's fine, and I think that when you change the use table further on in the discussion, then that adds an ice cream truck to the use table, so we're golden.
Okay, a motion to add. Thank you, Megan. All in favor?
I'm going to pull out the little bubble gum out. On the toast.
I was, and just to clarify, I don't dream up this stuff. It all comes to us.
It all comes because somebody called me and asked.
And so we therefore, when we open up that part of the ordinances, we try to fit all of it in that we can. Restaurant. It has come to our attention that our definition of restaurant did not include outdoor seating at a restaurant. It was all indoor seating.
Yes.
And yet, almost a lot of our restaurants include the ability for outdoor seating. So we needed to update the definition of restaurant. An eating or drinking establishment where the preparation or serving of food is the primary business of the establishment, including cafes, bistro's, cafeterias, and other fast food and drive-in food establishments. Indoor seating at a restaurant refers to dining areas located inside a fully enclosed building. where customers sit at tables or booths within the, within the indoor environment of the establishment. Outdoor seating conversely is located outside the enclosed building such as on a patio, sidewalk, rooftop, front porch, or backyard area adjacent to the restaurant. Would that qualify us? Okay. I mean, this is all open for discussions, by the way, if anybody needs to pipe in, I haven't said that.
A second.
Do you approve that?
Yeah, first, second, all in favor? One of the glorious things about having Allison and a fresh set of eyes that has not lived in our community and been involved with all of these documents for years is that she finds the gap and then she says, what did you want it to be? And we're like, great, let's go fix the wannabe.
My, every email to Pam, what was the intention?
So, we are, we are blessed to have her as she helps us find how to make the town better. Alright, that is the end of the discussion on 14.02.005 definitions. We are leaving with one tabled, everything else passed. Okay. We are now opening the public hearing at 7:02 regarding the recommendations for amending Chapter 14, Appendix A, Schedule of Uses. Specifically, this conversation, but we can talk about a few other things, is to include, but not limited to short-term rentals of being allowed in the B3 district. The general consensus from our previous meeting is that it's a yes with the condition that it had to be on second floor. Is that correct? Okay. We also then went to ice cream truck. And we added it allowed in absolutely every single zoning district that we have.
Yeah.
Without any special use permits. If you want to drive your truck anywhere, it would be allowed unless it's on private property and therefore you would have to have permission from the private property owner. Everybody good with that?
Right.
Good. Okay.
What about adding close proximity to another ice cream truck?
Oh, that's just really funny.
They could competitive.
You know what?
The music gets louder and louder.
Well, I guess it'd just be like a.
The mobile truck can have a.
You know, this competition.
But the, but the difference is that a food truck is stationary for the entire day, selling from one location, and it can't be within 200 feet of a brick-and-mortar restaurant. An ice cream truck is constantly on the move, so we would never know where it was. So if two trucks.
We had two or three, and it was just whoever came already but first.
Yeah, always where there's ice cream trucks.
Yeah.
First come, first served, because there is no way in hell that we can monitor trucks' movements.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Certainly places like right here in the square or over by a crowded, where we do have family-owned ice cream shops. And we are.
Oh, my gosh.
Businesses, correct? Ice cream.
No, no, you're right, you bring up a good statement.
I would just, can we look at another town's ideas?
I have never seen an ice cream truck regulated anywhere.
I, my experience, they have not been limited to.
Well, to me, I mean, I do.
And you might limit it to residential districts, but.
I mean, the only thing we could do.
I do see a lot of kids come down here on the square after school, why don't they come down?
No, shoe fly is a very popular spot, so the only thing we could do is say, let's take it out of B3. We couldn't take it out of B2 or B1 because that's.
That's half of our residents.
I've seen it where they have to be continually in motion, and they're only allowed to stop when they are flagged down to sell ice cream, so that, so if that was.
We're keeping it out of the square.
So that, that would because they couldn't.
We keep it out of B3.
Sit in the square and wait for people, they would have to drive around to say, hey, ice cream.
Well, and I think it just wouldn't even be safe for them to be like circle in the square, you know, you have.
Okay, so, so we can take it out of B3.
How busy it is.
That takes care of the square, but, I mean, we can sit here and take it out of Business 1 and Business 2 so that it's not impacting sweet creamery or, um, but I'm gonna be honest, sometimes those shops aren't open when I want ice cream.
I was just sitting here thinking, I have a salon on the square and it would be great for us.
Yeah, I mean.
Especially for after school when we do have some kids that are inside.
Yeah.
You know, and even me, I like a sweet treat every once in a while.
Can you make them stay mobile until waived?
Yeah, we can do that.
Other than sticking to the same.
Yeah.
Ordinance as the food truck staff to park 200 foot away from any other commercial business.
Yeah. We can add that to the definition and say that they are not allowed to stand and wait for customers within 200 feet of a food establishment.
Unless they're driving.
But they would be allowed to drive and stop for a waived stop. We can put that in, I mean, again, it would be up to the business owners to call the police and say there's a problem.
Or just not be. Yeah, just not be in that spot for very long, right? You know, if you're camped out for longer than 30 minutes, you gotta move along, yeah.
Again, the only option, because nobody's policing that, so it, a business owner who sees it would have to call, would have to call the police.
Yeah.
It would be the only option. I mean, I get, I, I truly do get what you're saying.
But it feels a lot like the same though.
It just feels too, too opaque and, and complicated.
Yeah. Right. Okay, so I can make that as a note in the Schedule of Uses, or we can go back to the definition and add it there, or do both.
I think.
Or we add it to Mobile Food Truck Ordinance.
My personal opinion is it would be better in the definition, and the more notes you keep adding to the Schedule of Uses, it just muddies up the Schedule of Uses.
Okay. May I have a motion to move us backwards to the ice cream truck definition?
A motion to revise the ice cream truck definition.
A second.
All in favor of revising? Okay. Let me go backwards.
One minute.
Okay. So you cannot stop and loiter within 200 feet of a food establishment, which is the same ordinance rule that we have for traditional food trucks. And I'm gonna call it loitering.
Devil's advocate, what's your definition of loitering?
Is it in there?
It will come.
Right, so.
It's in gray, yeah.
Well, the word stop seemed pretty gray too, so. Alright. The word loitering by Oxford is stand or wait around idly or without apparent purpose.
But do we have one already for our city? Like, if somebody has like a no loiter, there's not, okay.
No. So. But no apparent, no apparent purpose becomes, loitering is not a word we can use.
Correct, because their purpose is to stop and sell ice cream.
So, loitering is out. No stopping.
Except when we, when requested to sell to a customer.
No stopping.
We can look up other cities definitions and.
Yeah.
No stopping except when waived. When appro, do we waive or approach? Because if I whistle, does that count?
Flagged, yeah.
See, now what's the definition of flagged?
I'm saying, we can look at another city's.
Summoned, isn't it?
I'm sorry, I know that this sounds funny, but I mean, this is where we're being forced into, so, except when. I need a word, guys. And I will go back and clarify.
Except when we, when requested by a customer.
Okay.
Is that requested by a customer? And is it a future customer?
Whistle, they can flag, they can holler.
Yeah. By a future customer, potential customer? If you're flagging them, but you haven't actually entered their space, are you a customer? Just trying to be? Okay, no stopping except when requested by a customer, period, the end. You always have to be on the move unless a customer stops you. Everybody good with that?
I think they should be allowed, be allowed to park somewhere and not.
Okay.
You know, eat up their fuel all day.
Parking?
They need to be held in the same standard.
Okay, so no stopping with it, so now I'm back to the no stopping within the 200 feet.
So, uh, there are ordinances on peddlers or solicitors, these are something, how long to be able to remain parked, standing or stopped while waiting for customers? Cool secret staging, standing or idling?
So here's some language from others. One.
We got rid of that.
Background check.
One is to put a distance restriction.
I don't want an ice cream truck with, you know what, ground around the school. Which seems to be a common thing recently from, from new news, but I've seen it passing the words of, of north.
If you're gonna add background checks back to the ordinance, the building department should not be responsible for performing background checks.
Agreed.
Well above our.
Yeah.
Agreed.
So here, here's some, here's some language from some others. You can use a distance restriction from other food establishments.
Okay.
Uh, cannot park directly in front of, adjacent to, a food establishment. Time limit of stops, you can have time limits of stop, five to 10 minutes. Certain downtowns or historic districts restrict ice cream trucks to designated vending zones. One example of Chicago has strict rules on that. So.
I would also say that they can't park in front of the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
They're saying it's not a school zone, period.
Yeah, it's a safety issue for one.
I'm okay with that.
Right.
I don't know if any of y'all have ever done parent pickup at the elementary, but no, there's no way they could even make it fit.
So I'm gonna say they cannot drive through a school zone during active, active zoning.
Ever.
It has been for years.
Hours.
Ever.
Okay, you want ever, so a school zone by definition is seven to three, or seven to nine, and then.
Okay, within.
Three to five. Okay?
Oh, you gotta be careful.
You got residents.
That elementary is right there about that, yeah, that neighborhood.
Or add background checks.
We can't have a background check because who's gonna do the background check?
They're gonna be spotted in one location for more than five minutes unless actively engaged in a transaction.
That's a good verbage, yeah.
It's been the devil's advocate.
Yeah, I understand, Tony, I really do, and I'm not upset, I'm just trying to find the way to get us.
So you're not even saying wave down or anything, you're just saying actively engaged.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing something out there.
Okay, so can they drive through a school zone and not stop?
I mean, technically, who are they gonna get from?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I, my, 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 I respect, I'm the one who threw the school out, is you can't stop in front of the school. I have no problem with that. But when I sit here and look at streets and as you're trying to go through neighborhoods, sometimes you have to pass into a road that becomes a school zone during morning and afternoon hours.
Could you set it up in a way where it's like, you can't do it between these times?
You just can't sell in a school or.
We can do it that way, you cannot sell in a school zone.
During the school day.
Yeah, between these times.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of businesses that even have signs that say, no deliveries during these hours.
Yeah, we can do that.
For that reason.
It's the same, it could, I mean, honestly, that's unsafe, first of all, we shouldn't ever have kids outside of our building, it's, that's, we can't have that.
So, it's crazy.
So if we're saying, okay, so.
But we also don't want taken off running hours.
Yeah, and you.
So if we say 6:30 to 4. No stopping in a school zone at all from the hours of 6:30 to 4. 6:30 AM to 4 PM.
On school days.
On school days.
Yes.
Okay.
Because you also don't want high school kids walking across the street, stopping, being late from class, because they're.
So summertime, that wouldn't apply.
Right.
You do it anytime during the summer, yeah.
Or weekends, or weekends.
Do we wanna say 6:00 AM or 6:30?
I would say 6:00 AM.
Okay.
Because I mean.
Would, would that apply to the snow cone truck? Because I see them park at the school during like football games.
It would, because that's what we just defined an ice cream truck as.
But if they're usually.
But they're invited by the school for an event, that would be different.
On school grounds.
If they're on school grounds.
And so they'd be covered under the umbrella of the school and.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Yes. Okay, no stopping, 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, in a school zone.
Yeah, so like if we had a build day and I called this ice cream truck and said, set up here, you know.
Right, we will say, unless with permission.
From the school.
On private property.
Yeah.
Jim, do we have a snow cone truck?
Uh, there's.
Funky Monkey.
Couple of.
There's several.
Jurassic.
Yeah, Jurassic, same thing.
I knew we had the Funky Monkey, but that's really stationary.
And then there's the other one.
Oh, no, they've got a truck too that they'll drive around, yeah.
Do they really? I don't know that.
Yeah, there's some kind of ones around.
Yeah, at occasion you can get into them here.
Yeah, they came to one of our birthday events too. We try to use all those different places when we can.
Okay, unless with permission by private property owner.
Yeah.
Okay. I may wordsmith this a little bit better, but the gist of this? Are we good? Is everybody kind of on board with where we're going with this one?
Yes, I want an ice cream truck.
What'd you say? Any, any other ideas that we need to be careful about in this particular definition? Alright, do we have a motion to reapprove this definition?
Yes. I'm voting to read.
I'll second.
Okay, so crossing that one out, we're now here, okay, all in favor? Okay. Alright, so now, going back to the Schedule of Uses with the concept of the ice cream truck. We had said in.
Everywhere.
All areas, including B3, the square.
So now that we think that's okay, if we're.
Do we want to take the square out, or do we wanna leave it all in?
Because.
Because we now, they can't actually stop and park and lure customers away from our current businesses.
Yeah.
But I think it's, I think it's fine.
I think it's, I think it's fine for now if we recognize a problem.
Problem, yeah, we can adjust.
Yeah, future, and we can address it.
Call future.
And the good news is that they have to have a permit, so we can pull the permit if we find that a particular truck is violating our intent. Okay, we're good.
Oh, fine.
Okay, just, I want everybody to agree that we're on the right track. And if we're off the right track, then we need to talk. Okay. Um, so the other change, did not change anything about what Schedule of Uses were allowed and what zones. I just simply changed that restaurant or cafe now says inside and outside dining. That's all we changed. Okay?
Yep.
Are we good with that?
Good.
Okay.
We did the gun manufacturing.
Uh, no, we have not hit that.
It was right above ice cream truck, but you didn't highlight it.
I missed it, I missed it, sorry.
I see it.
Okay.
It needs to be a special use permit and let it in industrial.
And bakery or gin.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just for industrial, right?
Uh, yeah. I just realized that it had, when I was looking through all of this, I realized it said that they could do it, and that would be something that we would absolutely want some control over. Okay. So, by the new definition of gun manufacturing. Where, so why should we let this be in?
Industrial.
Yeah, industrial.
Okay, but now that we have added to gunsmithing. Do we want to add a line in schedule of uses specific to gunsmithing, which is what we should do?
We did, but there is.
There is.
Where?
Right above, you have gunsmith shop, then you have manufacturing guns, then you have manufacturing artisan guns.
Okay, I'm not good. Because I don't even remember it.
Yeah, it's not in my mind, I'm not.
Okay. Gunsmith, here we go, it's actually right above, right? Ice cream trucks, okay, so let's come back, so gun shop. We have allowed in.
Actually, gunsmith was already in there.
Okay.
You did not add that, that was already in.
Okay, and the gun, yeah, the gunsmith, so right now gunsmith is allowed in industrial and in B.
Yeah, my, my version doesn't come up.
My version, yes.
It's on page.
Sixty two.
Sixty two. If you come up from the ice cream truck, you've got guns, gunsmith.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, gunsmith's third, yeah.
Yeah, so. Okay, so. Good, okay. So, okay, so gunsmith, we have in B two. Just allowed without any special, specific use permit.
Gunsmith shop, right, okay.
Yeah, the gunsmith shop. I'm calling this right, right now it is allowed in B two without any specific use permit. It is allowed in industrial without any specific use permit. The column that says S is the potential overlay that we have not talked about, so that does not exist yet until we get further along in that discussion. So gunsmithing, B two, industrial. Do we want to add gunsmithing to any other areas?
It would be like an artisan.
Well, I have the artisan, manufacturing artisan guns.
Okay.
Down below.
So manufacturing.
And that, we're allowing in B two and B three by specific use permit.
Okay.
I think we pay.
I would see the same for gunsmithing.
Oh, you're right, then we, we didn't finish the definitions.
With gunsmithing, we said we're taking the word straight out of ATF.
Oh, that's right, that was something we haven't done.
What is that word?
A fair question.
Person who has a business repairs firearms or makes or fits special barrels, stocks or trigger mechanisms to firearms. ATF regulation twenty seven C F U K R four seventy eight point one.
I'm in, yeah, hang on.
Gunsmithing sounds the same as maybe manufacturing artisan guns.
It does.
Except one is a tutorial and one just.
If someone regularly repairs, they must, okay, so they have to have a federal firearm license, type O one dealer firearms, which includes gunsmithing.
Okay, so, hang on.
Person and what is it?
ATF defines a gunsmith as a person engaged in a business repairing or customizing existing firearms, which is slightly different than manufacturing new. Which involves activities like fitting special parts, modifying, embellishing, or refurbishing them for customers rather than manufacturing or selling them. Gunsmiths typically operate under a dealer's license, type one FFL, to perform new services, which is different in a manufacturing license.
Yeah, and they are making new firearms for seller distribution, so there's your.
There is the difference.
Yeah, preparing, modifying, customizing versus making new in two different licenses.
Correct. So, right now, gunsmithing is B two and industrial. Knowing that that is a repair and modification shop and not a manufacturing, do we want to extend that to any other zones?
Any. Any business. It could be a retail shop, it could be even an artisan shop. I know downtown Heiko, there's a gun shop, right?
There everywhere.
On Main Street, right on the square.
Okay, so we wanna add gunsmith shop to B three. Do we want a specific use permit for it, or we just wanna allow it open?
Good question. Because the intent. If it's in B three, the intent would be that it would be something that would be a tourist attraction.
Correct.
That people would wanna come and see, it would have some interaction and some engagement with it.
But not every gunsmith shop is going to be like that.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm thinking.
Which is why we then had the manufacturing, the special use. Artisan guns, which that would imply that they're doing more work in public.
Okay, so we got two distinctions between gunsmithing and artisan.
Yeah, I think the, one of the things we have to actually change, manufacturing artisan guns should actually be artisan gunsmithing. Okay, so gunsmith shop, under the assumption that this is not.
Right.
An interactive engagement, we leave out of B three.
Yeah, that would be like the shop up on one forty four.
Right.
Where.
Okay, manufacturing guns stays in industrial, and because manufacturing, manufacturing guns, not gunsmithing, has a lot more regulations to it and is mass producing, we are stating that that stays in industrial with a specific use permit. Agree?
Well, it just needs specific use.
Does it need the use permit, or can you just allow it in the industrial zone?
I'm asking, that's what it is right now, so I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't think it needs.
Okay, so we're gonna flip that from S. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I read that wrong, that actually is just allowed.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna change the word manufacturing artisan guns to artisan gunsmith.
And ATF doesn't have a definition for artisan, I mean, obviously, we know what we're saying, but there is no.
Right, because we've defined artisan.
As a, yeah.
So, to me, a artisan.
It's more custom.
More custom, working in front of customers, teaching.
But that would require a special use permit.
I would say so.
Well, so if we allow a gunsmith shop in B two, or B one, I would say that an artisan gunsmith would also be allowed in B two without a special use permit.
Right, but B three.
But debris in B three, I would say it needs to have a special use permit.
Correct.
Specific use permit. An S, are we all in agreement?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
Okay, any feedback?
Confirming that you're manufacturing guns, just plain manufacturing guns, you're gonna change that from an S to an X?
Yes.
Okay.
I am, I'm gonna do that. I think that, oh, wait, um. Okay, so it seems like we have gun fact, manufacturing in here twice, so I'm gonna remove it from that. So as I was looking and going through this with the gun, we, I stumbled upon grain re, or gin, and it was just an X, so I am suggesting that it be turned into specific use, and the reason is because a grain re or gin has a lot of dust, and so when we've talked about beer manufacturing in industrial, we did put specific use permits on that, correct?
Okay.
Because of the exhaust systems and everything else that are required, that it was something we felt like we needed to kind of be a little bit more engaged, but I think leaving it as an.
In the industrial zone?
In the industrial zone. I'm fine with leaving it as an X, it was just something that I noticed that that particular type of manufacturing grain re, that it tends to be a bit more volatile. But in reality, all of the rules.
There are other businesses, other industrial businesses.
Could also.
Could also.
Okay, so we're just gonna ignore that I put that as an S and leave it back as the X and be done. Okay. The one thing I realized I did not put in here, in the residential section, based on our new definition of assisted living. Here, I did do it, and I just missed it, so assisted living in a private residence would be allowed in an R one as a specific use permit. Agreed?
Right, yeah.
Yes?
But we allow single family dwellings in other zoning districts, correct?
Yeah.
We allow single family dwellings in other zoning districts.
Okay, so do we wanna extend that to the other Rs, residential districts?
If it's a single family dwelling, I think it should be, what zoning district it's in.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, so we'll put.
And it's, by the way, defined it as four or more, and almost nobody will be able to do it anyways.
Right.
Because that would mean they'd have to have a five bedroom house.
Right, okay. There we go, okay, so I'm taking assisted living, private residence to specific use permits, R one, R two, R two M, R three, R four. Just to be safe. I actually don't think it needs to be an R four, I don't think you can have a single family home in an R four.
Uh, we'll definitely write the definition.
But would we put it in a manufactured home?
You're not gonna have a five bedroom manufactured home.
Yes, there are. There are a few, now maybe double wides that are joined together, but there is some manufacturing homes that have five bedrooms. Only, I only know that because I have employees that live in them.
I've seen them.
Yeah. I would rather be over cautious and say it's in all the residential zones and find out that they can. But, okay.
Okay.
All right, that is all of the changes. Oh, except the one specific that we have not necessarily addressed, so, no, we did, we talked about that in the very beginning, that we are going to allow short term rentals in B three on second floors.
Where are we specifying the second floor? Because I had a customer ask me, and we are referencing, I believe it's note five.
I mean, the only way we could do that is under the notes.
Okay.
Because a definition, if we put a definition in the short, of the short term rental, in the short term rental definition.
Then it ruins it for.
It ruins it for.
A regular house.
Right, okay, so I have, I really do feel it is, it has to become a note. And I understand what you're saying about not getting too many notes.
So we, we have a note already regarding residential and a lot of residential.
Correct, and I think we align with that.
Okay.
That note is where it will align into, we'll just clarify some wording.
So.
Because I think right now we state that this is for business owners and business managers' residence only.
Yeah.
So that. So we need to, let's talk about this, guys.
So someone's confused about what the second floor is?
No, they were, wanted to know, they had heard that we were going to limit short term rentals to the second floor only.
Yeah.
And so when I was reading through the proposed packet, there was, there's no language clarifying that it's the second floor only.
So residential living quarters are allowed as mixed use, any different building, if the property has more than three.
That's a different, I don't know how we ever.
Where the heck did that come from?
You wanna look at number five.
Yeah, okay, we need to look at number six for a different day.
Yeah, that's.
Residential living quarters are allowed as a mixed use within the same building in the commercial use, provided it represents no more than fifty percent of the total flare area of the development, and thus not be storefront or first floor. If the second floor is available. This is for business centers, so we need to strike, this is for business centers or business manager residence only, and.
Well, you would need to create a new note specific to short term rental, because if you strike this.
Yeah.
This note five is used in multiple locations.
Okay, so what is our note number we're on?
Five.
No, 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 the note, to add a new note, we're on ten.
No.
No, we're on.
You'd be on number fourteen.
Okay, so, the note for fourteen would be that short term rentals are allowed on second floor only. And then it still follows a specific use permit and it's B three. Is that good for everybody? Okay, okay. These is, okay, we've got that. Okay, so all of these changes that we have made in the schedule of uses, we need a motion to ex, to recommend all of these to council.
I'm moving to recommend them to council.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor? All right. With that. We were going to come back and discuss in a workshop, so this is not a decision making, this is a workshop, but we are open to all dialogue. The key things that came out of our last public hearing. And comments that have been made since. And what we have discussed in our other workshop was that the map was going to be redrawn to eliminate as much residential as absolutely possible. So coming down Bernard Street, where we were going from Grace to the river, we would actually cut between Bernard Street and Grace at property lines. And then when we hit basically Sexton Mill, is when we drop down to the river and cut across the river and back around. Does that make sense to everybody?
I'm having a hard time visualizing what that is.
Okay, so. Okay, so I had to blow this up for my own self. So we're right here. This is Storybrook. So we have property lines that come across like this to, um, Walnut. Then we would come down to the river. So-
Pretty much the-
So we would keep, these are businesses on the Bernard Street side.
Yep.
But we would come back down here where the residences are, but that they face Gray Street, we would take those out. So this is, this is in essence what it would look like. So this is, yes?
Can I ask, why is, why is the city wanting to do this?
Yeah.
Why is the purpose?
So we are a complicated downtown zone. We have more than just the historic square that is regulated and zoned for business. We have blocks on sides of the square that are actually general business or restricted business. When we look at the town's primary industry today, it's tourism. And so our tourism draw is in this downtown valley along the river, you know, from Heritage Park, trying to get people to walk around the square, and not just the square, but the businesses around the square. There are businesses, which you've just heard us talking through in the schedule of uses, that we would happily, happily allow in a B1 or a B2. But is it appropriate to be in this downtown tourism area? So we want to take what is currently B3, the historic square, and expand it. But we can't rezone all the businesses that are under B1s and B2s because they have their own definitions of what they need from setbacks and regulations, da-da-da-da-da. But what we can do is take an overlay and place it on top of the businesses in the larger zone that takes into account B1, B2, and B3. And we can unify what we want to see in this area.
So basically the city's wanting to control who comes in and what businesses are allowed in that area.
No.
All in there.
No, that's not what we're trying to do.
A small group of people to make that decision. I, I own property that's in this. And I do not and will not agree to this.
It's got three strict businesses.
I don't think it's fair to a property owner
That's right.
that a small group will pick and choose who can come in and-
Okay, this is not a who.
It's not, I mean, it's nothing to do with-
Okay, sir, no, this is not a who.
If you listen-
This is not a who at all.
We listened on the last meeting and it's the exact same thing. It's a roundabout conversation.
No, it's, it's to achieve an aesthetic. Every curb property-
Controlled by this board.
That y'all said. No, not controlled by us.
How would you could, uh, achieve the aesthetic if you're not the ones controlling it?
And it doesn't-
We are the ones that make it-
All properties are grandfathered in. All existing properties-
Unless they wanna sell, which limits who they can sell to.
But, but here is the deal with my property personally, okay?
Okay. Sir, I'm gonna ask that you actually provide your name and address.
That's fine. Do I need to stand up?
Yes, you do. Just so that we can actually understand and make this-
Yeah, I understand. It's, I'm Delaine Griffin. Uh, I own the property on Vine Street. It's currently a beauty shop. Uh, it's my wife's. I actually-
I'm sorry, Vine and what?
It's, uh, I can't think of the address. 207 Vine Street. It's right behind the city hall here.
Okay.
It's just around the corner Stallone. So, uh, at some point it's going to change ownership.
Okay.
And my fear, and it said so on the, the writing that I received, you know-
You, you are correct.
Is that at the time we either decide to rent or sell, then the city has the right to determine what can be rented or sold to.
I'm going, I'm going to, um- I, I'm going to, there is thank you. There is a I think if we do this in a different way, I, I want, I, I can sit here and try to explain this and I understand why this is confusing and hard to understand. And I don't want anybody to think that we're actually trying, the city has no interest in taking control of who you can and can't do things with.
That, that, then why is this whole thing in, in, in talk?
I'm going to come through the schedule of uses and give you some examples. And I want you guys to tell me, do you want that in the downtown valley? Or does it belong on 67?
Well, there's already scheduled uses in, uh, in, in this overlay. I know, because I had to go through all this.
You, you are correct.
There's no way I was gonna be able to come down here. So there's already a process to be able to come to the downtown square district where you'd have to apply for permits and everything. So why do an overlay restricting more businesses?
Okay, can, can, because the overlay actually will let us unrestrict certain businesses. So I know that that seems a misdemeanor.
Or you can add a business to a specific building.
Okay, so-
Instead of a whole overlay.
If I simply, you wanna try?
I just wanna clarify something real quick for, for Delaine Griffin. Per the zoning that y'all are, are one, and we're taking residential out, right?
Yes. Okay.
She said limiting residential earlier, not taking it completely out, but shrinking the overlay to limit the residential that was in the-
I, let me-
Well, we're still discussing, but-
Where is he?
Our last workshop, our recommendation right there, uh, was to take all residential out.
Okay, so-
Unless-
We're coming up here.
In the future, they wanted to be rezoned as businesses, then they-
All of this residential is coming out. So we would be coming down. So we're coming up Herford to Vine. There is a corner property that is an R1 that we are going to walk around and not include it. We're going to go onto the business side of zoning B1 and B3. Go over to basically where the yellow house is on Vine that is going, that's part of the Whiskey Woods complex. Go up and around Whiskey Woods, come back down to Vine, remove all residential on, I, I can never remember if this is the nor, I'm gonna say the north side, but the, but the 67th side of Vine. Remove all that residential. Come down around the con. The church has asked us to remove them from it, and we're going to work on that. And so we're really trying to draw a new map that is absolutely eliminating residential unless there is a residential home that is currently sitting in a rezoned area, but is grandfathered in. That's the only thing I can't tackle.
I got a question. So I own Studio 208, which is between the Sonic Lodge and the Green Pickle.
Correct.
I have a home behind me.
So the studio, the Studio 208 would fall in, your home would be out. Based on what we are proposing as the new line.
So then y'all could pretty much just say, if I get ready, because I'm looking at retirement before long and I would like to do something with my building.
Okay, can I come back through and explain? I, 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 I understand the fear. This is not supposed to be fear that we're trying to create.
Well, that's very scary because Gabe can't sell his business. He can't sell his building on the square.
Yeah, that has nothing to do-
That's my fear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's, Gabe is a whole different thing. Please don't use Gabe as an example.
But he's right down the street from me.
You're right, but this has nothing to do with Gabe.
I, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the situation is very similar.
Okay, so-
Yes, it's very similar.
Okay. I'm going to go through from a commercial district standpoint items that are allowed in B1 and B2.
What am I considering?
You're a B3, right, which is all?
B1.
Oh, B1? She's a B1. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, she's a B1.
Okay.
No, B3, sorry.
No, she's B3.
Wait, so I'm sure?
Right.
Okay, yeah, you're a B3.
B3.
So you're already under whatever-
Yeah, and so I, I also, I have a few more questions. I don't wanna get anybody off track, but I do have a few questions about when was this whole overlay done and when was this-
Oh, it's not in-
This overlay is not done.
So the historic already has an overlay?
The historic overlay is already in place. This is not in place.
Do we know when that happened?
The historic overlay?
Yeah.
In 1985.
Eighty-five, okay. I wouldn't have heard that.
Okay.
This was, uh, thought by somebody and the city council asked us to look into it, so this is-
Yeah. And, and there is, and, and I'm gonna say, if you actually read in the comprehensive plan, this is the suggested way to move zoning. And when we look at other major historic, not major, other historic cities such as Wasatch, Hachey, such as Mansfield, such as Fredericksburg, they have moved to overlay zoning so that like businesses are together regardless of their underlying zones.
I believe Fredericksburg's a little more lax, so I'm going to go down.
Okay, so an animal shelter is allowed in the B2. A and not, and let me say this. An animal shelter is allowed in a B2, but not allowed in a B3. So this is how we're looking at it. We have zoning within this overlay that's B1 and B2. So all we're really trying to do is take things and state art gallery would be allowed, um, auction houses is allowed in a B2, but not in a B3. A bakery or confectionery would be, would remain being allowed. Boat sales are allowed in a B2, but are not allowed in a B3. Boat storage is allowed in a B2, but not allowed in a B3. I'm just coming down and looking. Exterminators are allowed in a B2, but not in a B3. This is the kinds of things that we're saying, is this the kinds of businesses that in what we are, as a city, a collective, trying to boost the economy for all of our residents by making this particular area a tourist area and a residential, a benefit to our residents? Is this taking the concept of the historic downtown and just going a couple of blocks further? And saying that there are types of business that truly belong on 67 or 144 or on Bo Gibbs that isn't necessarily the kind of business you want in such a tight quarter of residents and businesses together?
But I will say, I think most of us agreed that we bought your business, could be downtown.
I think it'd be great downtown.
Yeah, we, we, we're, we have actually been working towards making that-
Allowing that to happen.
But-
I want all business to, to thrive down here, you know?
We all do.
You don't need a head shop downtown to get it.
We, we all do, but boat storage area right now would be allowed in this, in this downtown Little Valley.
When they have to apply for a specific use permit.
No, it doesn't have a specific use permit.
So some things don't have it right now.
And I'm gonna reply for one.
You're right, because your particular business use required it. A boat storage in a B2 is open. There is no specific use permit required.
Is there any B2 in the downtown district?
Just that one block?
Did we ever determine if I was B1 or B3?
You're B3.
B3, okay.
Just the senior citizen center.
No, me and Glen Hotel.
Just belong right here between Herford and Cedar?
This is me. This is me. So the citizen center, the Glen Hotel, which is right there. Me, this plot right here.
So we were talking about opening up things more, but I know if you're a B3, ultimately historic has the overall say over-
No, they do not have say of what types of businesses go in.
Okay, so it's just whatever their overlay is.
Their overlay is strictly about architecture.
Okay, there you go.
Architecture and looks. They have no control over the types of businesses.
And so, but that was something we were looking at, was allowing some that aren't allowed right now.
In.
Yes.
By creating the overlay, opening up this area to other types of businesses, but also being realistic about some of the types of businesses that truly belong on Highway 67.
Who determines that?
A collective, including you, because these are public hearings where everybody is invited in the entire town to give feedback, line item by line item.
Cause I'm thinking, I mean, the American dream, if you can buy a business, then you should be able to do with it what you want within legal reach of-
But right now you have a business in B3. You are limited in B3.
I know I am.
But by looking at this differently, by not saying, I'm only allowed the businesses that are allowed in B3, by creating the overlay, we're opening up for other businesses that make sense for this area. All I'm saying, and look, this doesn't have to pass. This doesn't have to become a thing. We're trying to work it all out because we were asked to. And we actually believe in the concept of it, I think. Does everybody kinda believe in the concept?
Yeah.
Y'all really do think that this downtown area has a potential to be like Fredericksburg? Y'all really think that?
I don't think we want it to be like Fredericksburg. We want it to be Glen Rose.
Yeah, but look at what Hiko's done.
I do believe there is growth. There's been growth just since I've been here. Um, and I, I know there will continue to be growth here and people visiting and workforce attractions coming. Um, I, I get the concept and the facade of it making the downtown area a better place, but there is still verbiage in that overlay that is unacceptable and it does restrict business owners and property owners.
Okay, that, as we've stated, is not actually the verbiage in the overlay.
Oh, yeah.
That was a state mandated, no.
It's on paper. It's hard to find. It doesn't matter. It's actually state code. I looked it up.
It's state code, that wording-
Whether we have an overlay or not, it's state code.
State code put that wording.
Yeah.
That is not anything that we were doing. What we're doing is trying to be realistic and surround the square and the business areas-
That's unrealistic to somebody that owns-
No, that-
Because the, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, no, we're gonna stop. Hang on, I'm gonna define this one more time.
If you come back.
That verbiage is simply a statement by the state that says you need to understand that your city is looking. It doesn't mean that they are restricting anything. It does not mean that any changes are going to happen. It is verbal law.
There's no way it can't be enforced if, if somebody, because it says states in there, you know, certain percentages of renovations.
The schedule of uses is the entire thing. No, I am sorry. It, it, you guys are fighting something that you keep trying to stay-
I just want clarification.
And we're trying to clarify that.
Instead of letting me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
If somebody wanted to renovate one of these buildings or sell it, turn it, just we'll go back to the renovations because there is, to a certain degree, that you guys can stop it because of that verbiage.
No, not that verbiage. That verbiage doesn't give any control to stop anything. All of that is the zoning in the schedule of uses. That verbiage is a scare tactic by the state to make you read what is the city actually doing. That's all it was.
It can't be enforced. If it's on paper-
But nothing is enforced until the schedule of uses is defined. That's what I'm trying to tell you. That verbiage simply means be aware.
The schedule of uses doesn't matter to somebody that's selling it. It, it matters to the buyer. The schedule of uses doesn't matter to somebody that's selling it. It, it matters to the buyer.
No, the schedule of uses is what's going to help a person buy or sell.
Or enable.
Okay, we're gonna take the lane building as an example, all right? Because while the city currently is in the possibility of, i- i- is in the process of of renovating it, let's say that the city realized it was gonna cost too much to renovate, and now that its champion isn't here, they give up, and somebody wants to buy it and they want to put, wait, let me, hmm, let's see here, uh, they wanna put.
Boat storage.
Um, well, sure, boat storage, right there. Or manufactured home sales, that's another fun one. They're gonna put that in the lane building. Do you really believe that that's gonna help the value of the properties on the square?
Hundred percent do not, but it's the way everything is written in.
I can't help how the state makes it to be written. Uh, that's not my writing. That was the state's writing.
Well, so.
So the only way that we can get through this.
That exists whether there's an overlay or not.
Maybe I'll reread everything and then.
No.
Prepare my.
Don't read the letter that the state required us to send, cause that's not giving you any information at all.
They watch.
You need to look at that.
Because we were required to.
Legally required.
So what you want to look at, what you want to look at is under the public agenda, the packet for this meeting tonight. Okay? You will see what is some of the proposed schedule of uses that we're trying to open up in this overlay. All right, but we can't get to the overlay and discuss what schedule of uses are until we all agree on what the actual outline is. So we have taken the feedback of everybody and basically said, because we have no intent to do anything with any residential unless there is a residential home that is in the middle of a now zoned B1 or B3 that has been grandfathered in. I can't spot that one out of the overlay. But we are going around the boundary of this downtown area and anything zone R1 is being removed from the potential overlay, potential overlay. The other things that were discussed was things such as if you are in the historic preservation overlay, they still control any of the architectural design, has nothing to do with us.
I agree, but with.
If you are outside of that, oh, if you're outside the historic preservation overlay, we would like the architectural design to be in keeping with what is in this area already. Not even telling you what it has to be, but just say it has to be in keeping. The key thing that we are really trying to focus on with this particular overlay is focusing on the types of uses for the land in this area. And that means opening up some uses to the square itself. And that may mean saying, no, that use really belongs on 67. But the legal, the document that was mailed out that had that wording that said they're changing things with a state mandated by law document. It did not actually provide you with what we're talking about. It did not provide you with what the details are that we're looking for. That's what our public hearings here are about, so that we can have these open discussions. But we can't have an open discussion if you keep focusing on the verbiage provided by the state that says you're not gonna get to do what you think you get to do, cause that's not what we're trying to do.
It is scary to read though.
I'm not saying it's not scary. And in the last meeting, I apologized fifteen million times that there wasn't a better letter that went with that mailing. I will apologize once again that the person in the building office that we were, I was working with for that particular mailing no longer was in the building office and there was a deadline of mailing that we had already posted agenda. We had already spent money on the newspaper and we wanted to get the topic out in front of the population of Glen Rose so that we can start gathering the feedback, so that this isn't just the decision being made by five volunteers. It is a decision that is being made in concert with everybody. We don't want to hurt anybody's business. And if you hadn't noticed as we went through all these things today, we very much listened to all the feedback and absorbed it and tried to address it. But part of our role as the volunteers who have then been approved and appointed by city council is we have to do the research so that we're providing information to council so that they can make the bigger decisions and that they can guide, cause they're elected, that they can guide how it actually enacts. Nobody is trying to ruin anybody. But at the same time, we have to make decisions for the community as a whole that one person may not benefit from. But when you have a town of nearly twenty nine hundred people and only it benefits twenty nine hundred and one is pissed off, sometimes I have to take the beating. That's my job.
I don't wanna get in a debate about verbiage, but as we've seen tonight with how many definitions were changed, verbiage is everything.
I agree that verbiage is everything, and that's why we have these meetings with public hearings, so that we're not taking the definition written by a single person, but that we're taking the feedback. That's why the state requires these public hearings and we are, we have to listen. And some jurisdictions don't give a crack what you guys say and they do what they want anyways. We don't. We care. We actually want your feedback and we went back and made some adjustments because we listened to you. So we can sit here.
You have a better process.
Yeah, I.
Great, you don't want us to do it, so.
No, do I have a better process? I thought you said, am I processing this better?
No, no, no. So the question, you've got five volunteers that listen and you heard us debate back and forth, get some clearer understanding. Um, I came in with a different impression of that Wren Street thing based on what I read, but then I heard different things. So we are no different than you guys. None of us are experts at doing this. We depend on people who really have a dog in the hunt, you know, it, it affects you and then it's no longer abstract when we listen to it. And then you've heard changes, rethinking, questioning, coming up and saying, okay, let's, let's go forward with this. I think most of us thought going in that that development process wasn't, you know, we didn't know where the parking was gonna be. We were concerned about Bernard Street. I think our initial impression was, ah, probably not a good idea. So I'm just hoping that you understand that we do put time in this. We're not the experts. We ha- we depend on you guys showing up, telling us what your concerns are, what you want to see, and then trying to keep it in consistent with the vision of the, the community and with the master plan, because those are the guiding documents that we have to work with. It's unfortunate that the state document has been the thing people are fixated on because that's there whether we issue the, whether we go forward with an overlay district or not. That's a fact. That's just a, the state, a state provision or a state law. We have no control. But it doesn't govern how we operate and it doesn't govern what we're trying to accomplish.
I'll refrain from any more questions until I see the full outcome of what wants to be the overlay.
I don't know what y'alls, but I mean, to me, this is gonna be a long, long, long process. I don't think we should ever make any quick snap.
I agree.
Votes on anything. I think we, I think it needs to keep coming back to the table and keep coming back.
Every month, we're going to have a workshop on this and look at it a little bit better until we feel.
And get more, every time we get more input, then we change and change, you know?
If you want to have.
I think it's a long term.
Pointed specific subjects for each workshop instead of just overall.
Yep.
Here's the whole.
Yeah.
Plan, maybe each workshop is, is a certain subject.
I agree.
Yeah, I, and I really appreciate that you guys came out and have the input and have strong opinions about it. All I would ask is that, um, we work together on it and have a conversation and not attack us.
I'm always up for conversation.
What's that?
I'm always up for conversation.
Yeah, so that's.
Well, I mean, in like.
Yeah, but, but when you attack us and talk about a few people making decisions, taking control.
I, I think attacked is a strong word to use in that situation.
Well, that's exactly what you guys said, that, that this was a grab, this was socialist, I, I think I understood.
Marxism.
Marxism, yeah, Marxism, well.
Communism.
Yeah, right. So how is that not an attack on what we're trying to do?
If you start controlling people's businesses, what I'm afraid of, whether I get to come down here or not, that's regardless, is if, you know, there's strong changes down here, it starts to spread throughout the city and then it does affect my business and other businesses because, oh, we got.
Yeah, but I think you're getting way ahead of what, what we're, I mean.
Sometimes you have to think ahead.
Well, okay, that can create a doom loop. That, that's not reality. If you watch.
Yeah, it still doesn't negate the fact that it's a possibility.
Well, there's lots of things that are possibilities, but.
There, there's a possibility that we can come in and rezone absolutely everything and every, and change the schedule of use for everything and don't even have to have a, a, a notice being mailed to you on a schedule of use.
That's what's scary though.
On a schedule, and I'm just trying to say, on a schedule of use, that can just be changed. Without, we have to give a public hearing, we have to put the notice in the newspaper, but by doing this as the overlay, we actually are required to provide you guys with the mailing, with the information. We're required to give you guys more so that we can get that feedback. The other thing is, and, and I know you don't know me from Adam, but I have sat in this town for quite a number of years now and I am the last person has ever tried to hurt anybody else's business to the degree that I've hurt my own. And so to be told, sorry.
It's fair.
I.
I would, I would just like to share why I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
Months ago, my wife was approached by a spouse of a city person and the spouse told my wife, I've always wanted to shop and I would love to have your property. Now, in my mind, that could be used as a land grab by a city employee. That, I just see that if the city gets too much control, then they can say what goes into that property, what doesn't go into that property and that.
The city already has that power.
That's.
Through the current schedule of uses, the city already has that power. I just need you to know that. This isn't changing that.
So that city employee could land grab my property by.
Right now. So here's, here, here's what it is. Right now, you are, you are zoned, a particular zone, whether it's a B1, B2, B3, R1, or 2. All those are zon- zones, okay? The city, as it speaks right now, no changes, has rules about what's allowed in that zone. Okay? The change to anything that's allowed in that zone has to be published in the newspaper to tell you that we're talking about it. It has to be ha- held here in a public hearing where if you read the agendas that are available online, look at the city calendar in front of the city hall to know that there's a meeting of the planning and zoning or city council, then you can come in and hear what the changes would be. Then through whatever process, whoever sits on the planning and zoning commission, not us, but anybody that sits up here, can make a recommendation to change the use of a zone and then send it on to city council. And city council is made up of elected officials that the public voted for. The twenty nine hundred residents of Glen Rose who bother to vote then pick who want, they trust to represent them. It is only when city council makes the final agreement that, yeah, we're gonna change that use, could something happen. A city employee does not have the ability to change a use of a property at all. Period, the end. They don't have the power to make a change to a use or a zone. They can request that people look at it, but it goes through two groups of people before that happens. And that there's two public hearings where feedback from the public is provided before the change can happen.
Here, here's.
Your, the city employee whose spouse did that, did not do it with the authority of city council at all. City council is the only one that has the authority to do that. We are here as volunteers because we volunteered to believe that our community means something and that we want to help guide it, protect it, yes, grow it to whatever degree that needs. You watched me abstain or actually veto the vote for that development because I actually don't think that two-story houses at four hundred thousand belong on that corner. That's my personal opinion. I am one voice.
I agree.
The other four decided they're okay with it. So we take that information to city council, we provide the reasons that they are okay with it and I provide the reason I'm not. City council decides. They're the elected officials. They are the final authority of everything in this community. Except things that are actually law. That's the police. Or the sheriff, depending on where you are. So we're trying to have open dialogues to discuss what the future of our community can look like that will help our community as a whole. That's what our dialogues are. That's what every single one of us has agreed to put our personal business aside and look at this as a collective for the community. I'm sorry if I sounded tense or tears. I apologize. I should have been better.
I didn't think you were aggressive at all.
Yeah, you know, we, we want your help and we can do it effectively or we can do it combatively.
And I apologize if I come off aggressive. I just, I'm pretty monotone.
Right.
It just.
Well, using, using words like Marxism and things, those are trigger words. I don't think are needed in the conversation. We, we all want similar things. We want the Glen Rose that we're proud of, that will stand the test of time, that leverages the historic, uh, nature that we've got. We all want those things. How we get there, that's where we're trying to figure it out. We don't have the answers. But if you and other people that you know have these concerns and come, come and get involved and have the conversation, you've seen, we go back and forth, oh, I thought it was this, no, it's, it's clear here. I don't know the things you know or you know about what's important and your area and you've seen us go to the map, say, oh, let's take a look at the map. Let's understand this. Let's get the context. So we're not here trying to shove anything down anybody's. So, we're not here trying to shove anything down anybody's throat.
We're not here for a land grab, we're not here to.
But we're trying to create something that gives us guidance for smart growth and focusing on who we are as a tourist town. How do we get there? And you guys can help us figure that out. And, and I hope you do.
We do, I, I understand, we appreciate you, the last meeting, cuz that, we talked all about that for a while and, you know, like I said, thought there was no reason that those tactic partners should not be downtown. We, we hundred percent agree that that's something that should be and so I appreciate that, cuz I didn't even know that was something that wasn't allowed. Cuz I mean, there's so many, there is so many schedules of uses and things, so, you know.
Yeah, Stevensville has one.
Oh, yeah, everybody does.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't like the, the verbiage everyone's upset about, but good thing was it got everyone involved.
It really did, we had so many good conversations.
We've never had a turnout this easily.
We've never had that many people come and give input before and it really.
Yeah.
We stopped and had a whole week, you know, a Saturday workshop based on trying to synthesize what we heard.
It's really great turnout, I was hoping it was gonna be at least half of that here today, but.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
It's, it's helpful, it's, it really is.
Right.
Over here.
Well, and that's how I got on the board, cuz I was in your seat, not really.
Dwayne, did you get your question answered?
I did, I did.
You're right, cuz Megan was sitting on that side and she was very upset about something and she personally attacked me on Facebook and I finally got back, I was.
I'm, I'm not a Facebook person, I want to pay to your face.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I wanna get answers face to face.
But she, she got very, very upset with me, said some stuff that I took to heart and I then told her, if she didn't like the way I was doing it, she should get on the damn board.
And here she is.
So there you go. And now I work with her in a collective way and I listen to her and I hear her and I try to give her my point of view and so, uh, we're gonna have seats coming up at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So.
It's not a high bar to begin, you know?
You don't like, you don't like what we're doing, write, write your application and tell the city. There's a few of us that we keep having meetings like this, I might quit.
So is, is the proposed, I guess that's what you call it, the proposed overlay y'all are looking at, is it in the package that's online? Because all I've read is what the state.
The schedule of uses, no, the schedule, cuz we weren't talking, any, it, as a workshop, we were just having some other discussions about how we were changing the boundary. We, cuz we had listened and we were coming up with what the new boundary would look like. And so it was something that we didn't have in the packet because it's a workshop, it wasn't, it wasn't a voting discussion, so it wasn't in the packet. It was an internal dialogue that we wanted to bring to this meetings that we could get some feedback on where we were going. But the schedule of uses that is in the packet that we were just going through does have a column for the overlay district cuz we wanted to kind of start laying in what made some sense, it is not.
I can find it on the website.
You can find that on the website, if you go to the homepage of the city of Glenrose website, click on agendas.
Yeah, it starts on page three.
If you go, click on agendas.
I'm getting there, so if you go to the homepage and then you go to government, go down to agendas and minutes.
Then go, you'll go to, after tonight, you will go to, uh.
Tonight it's on the upcoming meetings.
It will go to the recent meeting.
But after tonight, you'll click on the tab to the right for recent meetings and then you'll see everything.
Okay, and then what, what the, what the packet has, and I just wanna make sure everybody knows if you're gonna go and look. So what you're gonna see is everything that we have been discussing, that we have made all the notes on, um, that has altered based off all the dialogue. You will then get to
Everything's.
A document like this.
Yeah.
Okay? This chart document, you will see where it, it's the third column from the far left is kind of a concept. This is not what we've, we've never even talked about this as a group yet. We threw some stuff in this just to kind of say, where do we start the dialogue? So, the actual where it says downtown overlay, it's the third column, if you scroll through all of these use types, we would love for you guys to kind of go through and go, yeah, this should be in the square, yeah, I can kind of see why that doesn't, you know? Go through all of it.
Well, I mean.
Give us the feedback.
We just found three errors in, in it, or three very confusing areas ourselves just.
This is, so you need to understand that these ordinances have been worked and reworked over the last, what, fifty years, probably?
Hmm, probably more than thirty-five.
Thirty-five? And so every time somebody has an idea, every time the city has a new mayor or a new city councilperson or a new city administrator or anything, these things have been updated and changed and it hasn't always done, been done in a concise, clean manner. That has been a project that we have been undertaking to try to get conflicting items out of these ordinances where one document says it in this place and another document says it in this place, but it's totally different. So that's a long project and it really wasn't until about last year that we really had the people in place of city employees who could take that and work with us in getting it better so that there wasn't confusion. And so, what you see in this packet is not, in this, in that particular column has never been discussed with us as a group. It was a cut and paste job that we haven't even gotten to that dialogue yet in the concept of the overlay.
Yeah, the biggest problem was we were trying to vote on something last time and we shouldn't have, that's why I brought up the letter, right? We were, it's not time to vote and it's not gonna be time to vote, I feel like, for a very long time. So you won't see that letter again.
And that was not us pushing to do the vote.
I mean, personally, I was not willing to vote for it anyway.
It was not us pushing to do the vote. We were, we were, we were required to bring it out to the public for a vote because we were on behalf of others. But we got feedback.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad that we brought it out and that we did that letter, even as crappy as the letter was because this was never gonna be something that we wanted to do in a vacuum. So, I'm honestly glad that the ugliness of that letter went. I just want us to move the conversation beyond the ugliness of the letter now so that we can actually have working conversations. And I promise not to break down in tears again. But with all that said, if there is no further business.
We're out of here.
Yeah.
Before this zone commission, then I am calling it quits for the night at eight-twenty-nine. And if anybody wants to join me for a drink and have a one-on-one conversation, the bar will be open.